Good evening, everyone. Looks like you're all favoring the side by the door, I noticed. Almost all. Welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council for Tuesday, March 6th, 2018. We did just meet in closed session with no reportable action during that closed session. So I will invite the acting clerk to call roll, please.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adopt this agenda?
I make a motion we adopt tonight's agenda.
And a second, if we have the...
A second.
Vote cast, please. You ready for that, Julie?
I'm trying, I'm trying.
I can withdraw if you need.
If it's easier just to do verbal, we'll do verbal. It's not a very...
Do verbal.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
All right. We'll start with the non-controversial stuff. Proclamations and recognitions. First, we have a proclamation recognizing March 6th, 2018, as Arbor Day in the town of Yountville. And I do have this proclamation that I'm going to be presenting to the clerk, recognizing that. There are some very nice "whereas's" in here. If you'd like to read them all yourself, you're welcome to do so. So I'll just pass this over to our clerk to file that in our record. Let's get to the stuff we really want to get to right now. We want to recognize one of our own, Mr. Jack Gleason, for his 12 years of volunteer service in the town of Yountville. And Jack, if I could invite you up to the podium, I'd like to present this certificate and what's become a very popular special gift for these types of things.
Okay.
If you could back up just a little bit, I'm not going to push you or anything.
Oh, here's your back.
Yeah, right. I know. You can wield that thing, I'm sure. First of all, I'll just present this to you and we can put it on the table, but this is to help you enjoy that retirement time that you're going to have. We just like to show you our appreciation through a little bit of our favorite crop here in the valley.
Yeah. It's very popular, isn't it?
It is. So with that, I'll just go ahead and hand that over to Nathan.
Oh, I just get to look at it.
No, he'll give it back, I promise.
He'll give it back.
We have a lot of law enforcement here to make sure. So I have a feeling I'm just starting with the appreciations here. So I'm going to do this. This is a certificate of appreciation in recognition of Jack Gleason, volunteer, Napa County Sheriff's Department, Yountville Station. The town council and staff express a sincere thank you for your contributions and service to the town of Yountville as a volunteer of the Napa County Sheriff's Department, Yountville Station, for the past 12 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
And I believe we have a little bit more to hear. So Sergeant?
So, I talked to the Sheriff's Department Administration and I said, you know, I'd like to be able to do something for you, specifically from the sheriff's office.
How much?
And they said...
Yeah, exactly.
They said, "You better." So they just... The sheriff wanted me to tell you, "Thank you so much for your 12 years of experience and service to this community. You've been dedicated, always helping out every time you're asked, and thinking of our community before yourself." And so we had a plaque made for you with our badge. It says, "Presented to Sheriff Volunteer Jack Gleason. In appreciation of your 12 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Napa County, presented by the Napa County Sheriff's Office, 2005 to 2017. Jack, we love you, we appreciate your service."
John, thank you.
It's an honor.
Why don't we get all the... Let's get all the badges up here to get a picture with Jack, if we could, please.
You don't have a badge on.
Thank you, Jack.
Can I borrow one off your plaque?
Sure.
Thanks, Jack. Hang it around your neck. Yeah, you get off your tuchal. Can we handcuff Jack? I was hoping they'd take it out of my house that way. Give all the old folks something to laugh about.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Jack, would you like to share? Would you like to share any thoughts? Would you like to share any thoughts before we proceed?
All I can do is say, "Thank you so much." It has been a pleasure working with these guys. I love them.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I hope I didn't give any hurt.
It saved the parking Yountville again.
Nathan, please give him back his wine. You're getting your wine returned to you, don't worry.
Okay.
And he's out. He's earned it. Next up, we have public comment on any items that we don't have on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the council? I think you're all here for a reason. Okay. Moving right ahead, we have no consent calendar item, no presentations. We'll get straight to our public hearing for the night, considering adoption of a resolution approving a use permit amendment for Gerard Tasting Room. We'll start with the staff report.
Great. Thank you. So, before you this evening is an application for a use permit amendment for the Gerard Tasting Room. Before you, in your packet, is a detailed staff report and attachments. What I'm going to do this evening is just give you a few brief highlights for it, and then we'll be available for any question and answering. So first, just a little bit of history on what this... We call it the pilot program. Is, on February 7th, 2017, the town council amended the town's parking standards to require off-street parking based on a business's use area, indoors and out, rather than just FAR, to better approximate the parking demand of the use. And as part of that agenda item, the town council discussed a pilot program for wine tasting rooms, in particular, those tasting rooms that allow their guests to utilize onsite open space, space that is outdoors, that's open space, even though the open space may not be designated as use area under their approved use permit. Then in November, the town council amended the parking ordinance to allow an increase or a decrease in the number of parking spaces by the town council pursuant to an advisory checklist being developed by the planning and building director regarding the review and approval of reduced or increased parking requirements. And then on December 5th, 2017, the town council adopted Resolution 173447, which established this advisory checklist for wine tasting rooms that would allow a reduction in the number of required off-street parking spaces. This resolution established this advisory checklist and stated that it would take effect when an existing wine tasting room applies for a use permit amendment to extend the business's permitted use area to include a portion of open space without necessarily applying all of the town's parking standards established by the municipal code. And according to that resolution, the use permit amendment would be granted only if the town council could make certain findings. Those findings, just as we did last month with the Stuart Sellers application, is what we'll be focusing on this evening with the applicant, Gerard Tasting Room. On February 9th of this year, staff received an application for a use permit from Gerard Tasting Room to allow wine tasting service in this open space area, this deck patio space in front of their tasting room, and to not apply the town's parking standards to the modified use area. Although, now, it should be noted, although the applicant has had use permit violations in the past, there have not been any violations that the town has been aware of over the last 18 months or so. The council has, though, in their packet, this detailed staff report, and now we're going to be talking about each of these required findings. So, finding number one, it says, "The business is unable to meet the required parking demand set forth in Chapter 17, Section 88 of the Yountville Municipal Code with the addition of the proposed use area expansion." There's a nice aerial, in case any of you are wondering, hey, what does Gerard Tasting Room look like from a satellite? That's what it looks like, so you can get a good bird's eye view. The applicant submitted in their project narrative the following. "Gerard shares parking with other Washington Square tenants and its customers. There is no option for designated employee parking in this lot. We park in the lot when spaces are available. Most employees are required to arrive onsite between 10:30 and 11:30 a.m. when parking space is not an issue. If space is not available at Washington Square, employees have been instructed that the non-residential areas near Yountville Park are the alternative." Now, the applicant also included in their application some email correspondence with the property owner, and in that email, the property owner states that there are no assigned parking spaces for the property, for tenants, and that the 18 tandem employee parking-only spaces are really the only ones that are specially marked, and they are... Let me pull out the laser pointer. These ones, right there. And these are predominantly used by R&amp;D Kitchen staff right now. Other employees are encouraged to park off-site during busy times, when they can't find parking in this lot. And based on the narrative submitted by the applicant, that's up at Yountville Park. So if the parking standard of one space per every 250 square feet were applied to the outdoor patio space that we're considering this evening, then Gerard would be required to locate an additional three parking spaces onsite. If the enhanced limited-service restaurant standard space were applied, then they need to find an additional four spaces onsite. Regardless of the standard used for the outdoor service, Gerard is unable to acquire this additional parking onsite. Staff is in agreement that the business is unable to meet the required parking demand for the extra use area. If anyone has been there during the particularly busy times, it's known how congested this parking lot gets, and so it would... And it's known that now we can't have special assigned parking spaces, saying Gerard employees parking only. So staff wanted to share that in order to provide consistency, staff actually recommends that a similar program be adopted for Gerard Tasting Room that was established for Arena Galleries and Gardens. Arena enrolled in the Employee Parking Management Plan and currently holds four parking permits. You know, those permit tags that you hang from the rearview mirror. Arena is in this shopping center, but does not have assigned parking areas in there. And so they are directed to a parking zone near Yountville Community Park, the spaces that are either adjacent to the cemetery or along Washington Street on the west side, right next to Napa Valley Lodge. Those areas will have less of an impact on neighborhoods than, say, the east side of Yountville Park. And Arena pays for those two spaces over there at a price of $1,500 per space. Because Gerard has seven employees that they've notified us of and has submitted proof of, the parking management plan that staff is recommending would include four spaces along Washington Street near Napa Valley Lodge, similar to what we've done with Arena. So that was the first one, and that was the most complex of the findings. The next ones, I'll go more quickly, I promise, if you want me to. Finding two, "The business's guests must already use the open space regularly according to the provisions of the existing approved use permit." So the applicant, in their narrative, did state the following. "At this time, all Gerard guests wishing to enjoy their tasting on the patio are required to receive their pour inside the tasting room, consume the wine outside, and then return to the tasting room for their next wine. Due to the appealing nature of the space, the patio space continues to be a popular choice for Gerard guests. Their original use permit approved the outdoor consumption of wine on the deck, and it was clarified in 2009 that wine tasting service by employees, defined as the pour and/or delivery of wine, should not be conducted on the deck. Because the existing use permit already authorizes the use of the open space, guests do use it regularly, particularly during the warmer months of the year." And now, even though the drawing here shows 16 seats, currently there are five tables that could fit 20 seats in the deck, and staff is of the opinion that this applicant satisfies this required finding. There are guests that use the outdoor space regularly. There's a picture of the five. The third finding says that permitting employee service to guests in the outdoor use area would not require any additional staffing. The applicant submitted project narrative indicates there are seven employees, five full-time hospitality staff, one manager, one bussler. There might have been a typo in the original staff report that you have seen where it indicated there's five full-time employees, that has been revised, so hopefully the one you're looking at on the iPad has that revised version. To clarify, it's seven. Five hospitality staff, one manager, one bussler. During the week, no more than three are working at a given time, but all seven are working from Friday to Sunday. Staff is of the opinion that the applicant's application may satisfy this required finding, but recommends a condition of approval that would include monthly reporting, similar to what was used as a condition with Stuart Sellers last month, for one year after implementation of project approval, that the number of employees has not exceeded seven. Staff also recommends that a cap be placed on the maximum number of seats to ensure that it won't exceed 20. There's 20 now, don't put more chairs out there. Next, "Permitting the business's staff to use the open space as use area would not negatively affect the noise, lighting, safety, or business practices of neighboring properties." They're already using the space. Take a look there of what the neighboring properties are. Staff doesn't believe that this application would... Staff is of the impression that it satisfies this finding, because the approved use permit already allows for the hours of operation, be 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. outdoors, and for special events until 10 p.m. indoors. It's not expected that allowing service to occur on the deck will bring any additional impact to the neighbors, affect their business practice. They're not proposing any extra lighting, so staff thinks that this finding is met with the application. Then also, "The use permit amendment would enhance the atmosphere of the streetscape and improve the overall experience for the business, staff, and passersby." Want to share one line from the narrative where the applicant stated, "We believe that allowing us to serve our guests on the patio will greatly enhance our guest experience as well as the ambiance of Washington Street. This level of hospitality is not only what Gerard guests have come to expect, but what Yountville residents and visitors expect from a town of our caliber." Now, because guests are already using the deck space, permitting service would make the area livelier, and staff's of the opinion that this would... An active, open deck would be considered a positive element to the community, and that it would satisfy this required finding. And then wanted to send... Do a reminder that the resolution that approved the advisory checklist also included, if the town council wishes to make any other finding, they can. Staff didn't, but you're welcome to. So those are the findings. Included in the resolution before you are a few conditions of approval. One is that it incorporates all of the previous conditions of approval from the existing use permit, except for the ones that are modified tonight. Another one, which the council could discuss if they want to, "Staff included only the service of catered appetizers, defined as hors d'oeuvres and cocktail-sized food, may be served in the outdoor deck space. Catered meals, defined as full-size meals served individually or in a buffet, should be limited to indoors." Right now, that full-size meal is limited only to their special events. Staff proposed this condition in that the noise impact on neighboring businesses and residents might be bigger with a full-size meal rather than just hors d'oeuvres. Council can discuss that, whether they want to include that or not. The other ones are the standard ones that were similar to what were adopted with Stuart Sellers. The maximum number of seats permitted on the deck space shouldn't exceed what's there right now, which would be 20. The applicant, which we already talked about, would include all their employees in the parking management program, which would include those off-site spaces. The applicant would provide a monthly report, due the beginning of every month to planning staff for the first 12 months to operate under the amendment use permit. And then lastly, if conditions of the business change at all during these first 12 months while we're reporting, that would affect or alter the findings made by the town council, then the amendment to use the permit may be revoked. It's important to note that if ever they're in violation of their use permit, even beyond these 12 months, there is always action that can be taken with fines or penalties, or even ultimate revocation of the use permit, which is right, that is authorized within the municipal code. So with that, we're here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Any questions to the staff report? Councilmember Durham?
Is there a current parking plan for Hunter and Gatherer on the property, or Bovine?
No. Right now, the only parking plan associated with anyone on that property is Arena Galleries. They're the only ones participating in the Employee Parking Management Plan.
So R&amp;D is not participating in the Employee Parking Management Plan also?
When it was initially adopted, there was kind of a hybrid one, which is how the tandem spaces got created, but the one that we know today, the Employee Parking Management Plan with the permits, Arena is the only one participating.
Okay. But if this were to pass, then Gerard would be participating with four permits per space at $1,500 each?
It would be for those in addition to one permit per employee at $50 annually, per employee.
Okay.
So the $1,500 is only because it's off-site, and they can't meet the parking inside their primary parking lot.
If you refer back to ordinance... Sorry. 2717-08, which allowed them use on the patio, finding number 14 states that the applicant shall maintain on the patio one table with four seats as public open space for use for the general public at all times. So they're clear that that fits into their 20 seats maximum as well?
That would be shared with them, and including this wouldn't alter that at all. Whether you're a customer of Gerard or not, you would still be allowed to have a hot dog there.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you. Councilman Dorman?
Thank you. So do we know for certain whether Gerard's employees can currently park onsite? Not saying whether there's space available, I'm saying, do we know whether their lease prohibits that?
Staff hasn't seen Gerard's individual lease. We've seen what has been shared in the narrative, saying that they park onsite when there's space available, and then off-site when there's not, but beyond that, we haven't seen any particular lease.
Okay. And then, these are some questions specific to the resolution, and it dovetails with Councilmember Durham's point. When we talk about 20 seats, I mean, they have a wine barrel out there where people can stand around and have a drink or a noce. They have a railing where people can sit and have a drink or a noce. Did staff consider... I know it's hard to count heads, but did staff consider a person count rather than a seat count?
That has been considered, but because, again, it's hard to enforce. It's easier to go by and say, "This is how many seats they have right now," which is what the current standard is, and to put a cap on that, rather than making a guess right now what the current situation is and placing a cap on, that becomes a much more nebulous figure to come up with compared to, "There's 20 seats? Okay, don't put any more seats out there."
And so if staff were to go by, or a code enforcement officer were to go by, and there were 30 people being served on the deck, would that be considered a violation of this permit if there were only 20 seats?
As it is written right now, the condition is on number of seats rather than number of people.
And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
A follow-up to that, there is a retaining wall that could be used as a seating wall. Is there concern with staff that you call out, to Councilmember Dorman's point, that no more than 20 guests are allowed out there? Because there could be a condition where additional seating happens outside of the chairs.
That could be the case. Right now, guests are using the space, and Gerard may have a business practice directing where they can... We need to see what their ABC license, the space required there. So, looks like Sandra has something she wants to say.
That may be something for us to discuss.
I think it's certainly a condition that could be added. To clarify, Councilmember Dorman is correct that there's a seat wall, and there's places for standing, and while the applicant represents, they'll only be using those 20 seats, it is good to look forward and then condition the number of people as well.
Okay. Other questions? Councilmember Mueller?
I have a question. The $1,500 per parking space, is that a one-time, or is that an annual?
Annual.
Annual, thank you. And the other... I'll hold the other questions, that's all I want to know for now. Thanks.
Any other of the staff report? Seeing no others, I'll open the public hearing. Invite, I believe, the representative from the applicant here. Please, if you'd like to come up and speak to the application. Welcome.
Thank you. So...
If you could just identify yourself for the record first.
My name's Troy Bradshaw. I'm with Vintage Wine Estates. We're one of the... We are the owner of Gerard Winery, and I do work at Gerard Winery on occasion. So I do want to address that, as it was referenced in the staff report, unknowingly, we did exceed our use permit roughly 18 months ago in the past by serving and selling wine on the patio, but since notification of that error, we haven't broken any rules and regulations in that time since. We do have a new staff and management in place at Gerard. We have essentially turned over the whole staff in that 18 months, and these people are very committed to... Very committed to following the conditions of our use permit as it is set, but we also look forward to the opportunity of proving to you that we can follow any rules and regulations that are set by a use permit modification. As it was referenced in the staff report, we do see this as a way to enhance the guest experience, not only for guests of Gerard, but also for guests of the town of Yountville. We know we're not just brand ambassadors for our winery, but we're also brand ambassadors for the town, and we want to be seen that way. We also want to be seen as good neighbors. So we look forward to proving ourselves should this use permit modification go through. The council had very good questions earlier. If it is made a modification of our use permit, that we can only have 20 seats outside, that is what we would do. I can say personally, from my time at Gerard, there has not been anybody sitting on that wall, that retaining wall that was referenced. I've never seen anybody just huddle around the barrel that's outside. Usually, that barrel that sits outside the door is our place to put menus, pens, anything we need to hand the guest during their tasting experience. So I hope that helps to answer a few of the questions that were put forth by the council.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicants? Representative Councilmember Durham?
Can you... I don't expect you to know all the other tasting rooms business, but I might assume that you'd know your neighbor's business across the street with Stuart Sellers. Can you just explain... You're saying 20 seats requires five staff members, but Stuart Sellers... On a Sunday? But Stuart Sellers, at their last hearing, last... The last council, said they only require three on a Sunday, and they have two and a half times the seats of you.
So if we're saying it doesn't take five people to serve those 20 seats on the patio, that is the total amount of people we may have on staff on that one day. We still have seating inside the tasting room that those other staff members may be helping. You'd like a more adequate number of staff. Seven staff members is probably what we have when we are fully staffed. In my three years with our company, three and a half years with our company, I don't think the Gerard Tasting Room has ever been fully staffed. So it's more like there may be four people on a Sunday, not five people. But five would probably be the most that we would have on a Sunday. They would be handling not just the inside, but also the outside. It's more like one or two people would be serving those 20 guests outside.
And then... Thank you. And then one other question. Resolution number 2717-08, which was dated September 2nd of 2008, states, and I quote, "The deck seating and bench seating area are considered usable open space and as such are open and available to the public for use without requiring purchase of wine or merchandise from Gerard Tasting Room." Are you aware of this?
I am aware of it now, but I have seen people sit down without purchasing any wine after purchasing a hot dog and soda from Kelly's and use our space.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Another question. Senator Mueller?
I have a question about ownership. I know we're going back 18 months when we had an issue that you acknowledged, and at that time, and maybe staff needs to jump in on this, we had a very difficult time getting hold of the owner. So if we do have an issue in the future, who do we contact? Who is the owner?
The owner is... Our president and CEO is Pat Roney.
So we would have to address any concerns or any issues of possible violation to the president of Vintage Wine Estates?
Or you could address our estate manager for Gerard, or myself, as well, and we could put you in contact with Pat, or the right person to speak to.
And that was, I think, part of the problem. That's where staff maybe can give some background here. We had a hard time figuring out who to get a hold of, or everyone was pointing fingers. So that's... So that's, I really want to nail that down, who we contact if there is a problem.
I just want to make sure that we stay on point about this application request tonight and not rehash violations of 18 months ago.
I'm just trying to figure out who, because it is kind of a broad term, and I don't think if we really need to contact somebody, we really want to contact the CEO. What does staff usually do in these situations?
We've changed our approach to code enforcement since we did it back then, and what we faced with this business was more of an ongoing violation where it would come into compliance, but then in just a short time, they would fall out of compliance again. There was some finger pointing and some excuses as to change in management. The way we approach it now is that we give a courtesy notice of the violation followed by a single notice violation, whereafter citations with fines would apply, and we're finding that citations and fines, after giving a fair amount of time to give notice of the violation, it has been more effective. So I think a notice of violation to the management would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
Hello, Mr. Maxwell, thank you for coming in. So I just want to clarify, it seems to me that there's a, you know, a dichotomy between having 20 seats on the patio, but allowing four of them to be always as accessible to residents or the general public who might want to come and not buy your wine. And I want to make sure that that is accommodated, because that was part of the original users' permit, use permit.
Before you answer that, I want to make sure that we understand what the actual ordinance in the permit says, because we have conditions similar in Bouchon Bakery. Is it a first come, first serve situation, which is, I believe, what was set back in 2008, that if the seats are available, they can be used by non-patrons of the business, but if they are full, that's not a violation of their open space? Or is it? Is there an interpretation you can offer?
I'd have to go back and look at the exact language, but I would believe the interpretation of first come, first serve is a fair interpretation, because the numbers on the deck, they ebb and flow throughout the day with the guests, and there's not a requirement that one be designated by sign or other method for...
But if there's a non-patron in a seat, they can't be asked to leave for a new patron? I think that was also part of it, if that speaks to your question.
I'm going to suggest that if that's of concern, we may want to add a condition for including signage to clarify that that is available, so that the person that may want to be using the open space doesn't feel put out by using it. We've done that in a couple other spots. I think Councilmember Durham, you brought that concept up, and that way we could put, you know, signage on both sides, and that way, if somebody was using it, they're comfortable with that access, and then if not, then the, I just think that it would keep the intent and...
Is that consistent with what we're doing? Again, I'll use Bouchon Bakery as an example, there's no signage there that says it's available to the public.
I would say it, we're evolving based on learning and trying to make sure, in this particular case, what I would say, we want to make sure that the public has a tool or that the staff just doesn't assume that the whole space is theirs to use and that they inadvertently chase somebody away from that seat that's been set aside. We have a trigger mechanism, which is the request in the applicant, so I think I see this as an opportunity for us to try to make the, make sure that the concerns on both sides are addressed. So I don't think it's inconsistent with how we're approaching things when we look at what's the current environment and how do we make it the best.
All right, I have another question then. Is it in the 2008 ordinance that we said that four seats would be saved, specifically four seats for general public? Then would you be amenable to our limiting, not limiting, but saying that you may have 20 seats available, but four of those have to be available for the public?
I think going back to the mayor's question, my company and our president would like to know more about the intent behind the resolution that he mentioned.
Well, it is an open space, and since it's an open space in the public right-of-way, you know, and because it is in the ordinance that was passed in 2008, it is part of your user's permit, that four seats would be available on a first come, first served basis for the general public without having to make a purchase. I just want to make sure that you understand that that is the case, and so you could have, you know, some people who want to sit outside, some customers who want to sit outside, so perhaps some signage would help you to deal with that issue with your clients, because those four seats on a first come, first served basis should be available. Is that not correct?
Well, that's not public right-of-way space.
It's not public right-of-way.
That's private property.
Correct, and it is open space. And I would just share that conditions at Washington Square have changed since the original 2008 approval, upon the sale of the property at Hillstone Group and many of the improvements they've made, and whereas this represented one of the only public open spaces on the property, now there is the walkway to the north that has benches on both sides, and that, those provide additional opportunities for public open space. The basket itself is wide open for open space, so there are a lot of opportunities, and I think it's fine if you are so inclined to hold four of these for the public, but that is confusing and difficult for staff to enforce, and perhaps a first come, first serve policy might be able to address all of the needs for open space on the property, based on its evolution over time, but that can definitely be amended by condition.
Well, that should probably be amended then, because if those four seats are not always available for the public on a first come, first served basis, then that, you know, why include that in the ordinance?
That's up for discussion tonight.
Yeah, there was no intent when that was written, that I recall, that they'd be reserved and left vacant for public non-patrons. The intent was a first come, first serve. If they are filled with patrons, then the public have other opportunities elsewhere. If they are open, the public can sit there and can't be told, no, you can't sit there. That was the intent of it, but to require open seats for someone that doesn't come to patronize the business was, I don't think in any way, the intent of that condition. Other questions of the applicant's representative?
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. So maybe you can answer once and for all, does your lease prohibit your employees from parking onsite?
I will be honest with the council, I have not personally viewed our lease, so I cannot answer that question, but I can try and have that question answered as quickly as possible.
And do you know when the five employees started working, well, actually seven, but five hospitality employees started working on the weekends? Has that been during your entire tenure there, or has that more recent?
The answer's not as cause dry as the council probably requires. I'd be honest to say, in our business, you never have a full staff due to time off requests, sick days, but yes, on a busy weekend, I would say on average, we have up to five people working in the Gerard Tasting Room. I cannot give you at length the time that that has been the case, unfortunately.
Okay, and you state in your narrative that your service hours are 11 to 7, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in the audience like to address this request? Good evening.
Hi, Council. Whitney Diver McAvoy with the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate you taking up this item this evening as a part of our commitment to look at our tasting rooms, be able to service our customers in outdoor tasting facilities. I believe that Gerard has made it very clear that they have a full commitment to comply with the regulations that the town set forth with this new modification. I believe that the new staff that is there onsite is committed to being a good neighbor and a good partner with us, so I hope that you will approve this item this evening and give Gerard the opportunity to show you they are ready and willing to be a good partner with us here in town and service their guests to the level of hospitality that we expect here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and invite further discussion and potential action by the council. I'll start as I...
Mayor, Council, I do have, I just want to, the answer to Councilmember Doorman's question, we have seen leases from other tenants in Washington Square that do require the off-site parking. Gerard is one of the longer tenured tenants, so I don't, I can't speak, I have not seen that particular lease, but I do know of other leases where that condition has been put in, just to let you know that, from staff's perspective.
Further discussion, Councilmember Mueller would start with you. I know. I know.
That's okay, I'll pass. Go ahead. Come back. No.
Councilmember Mueller?
So I'm a little confused now all of a sudden about the service hours, so are they 11 to 7, but staff is recommending 10 to 8?
They're already permitted to be open until 8:00 PM. They are choosing to close at 7:00, but their original use permit has always allowed them to be open till 8:00 if they so wished. There's lots of use permits in town that don't take full advantage of the full-time window in the existing...
So the service hours are not 11 to 7?
They are currently open 11 to 7.
Serving there, but they are allowed to do...
But they're allowed to go till 8:00 under the use permit. That's already been in place.
All right, well, I would like to put some additional, or at least suggest some additional findings, because I think the seat number versus the amount of people that could, you know, crowd onto that area, we really should nail that down about how we're going to do that. I have seen huge crowds there, the more people you have drinking makes even more noise, so I would probably recommend that, you know, they have 20 people there. So I'm certainly open, and, you know, they don't have to be sitting, but, you know, I think we need to limit that, and it seems like a reasonable amount for that space. They, that little pony wall there, I don't know if anybody's going to sit on it, but it's very low, and it, you know, could certainly, if you have a lot of people there, somebody could get pushed over, so that's my first thought, we should do something like that. Also, that barrel, what I've seen in the past, and, because it's really silent on what that barrel does, is they, it's been moved out to where the parking is, and then there's been signed, no parking here, you know, and it's contributed to some of the parking wars that we all know about on that north end, so is that, do we have any restrictions now? Is that barrel supposed to stay on the patio, or, I know staff has run into this before when we had the problems, how was that dealt with?
The barrel can be used as a landscape element or other element for the business, so long as it doesn't, it's not the outdoor display of merchandise, so they're not prohibited, they are prohibited from displaying wine on the barrel.
Okay.
But menus or other things that help with the operation of the...
All right, so it would be automatically restricted, that they could not move that out and do what was done in the past?
Oh, and then it's a question of the, so it's been moved into the parking lot?
Well, right adjacent to the parking lot, it says, register here, no parking unless, you know, you're a Gerard customer and all that, so...
I think it makes a lot of sense, considering that's been the past practice, to be really clear on what that barrel can be used for.
Okay.
As a condition of approval.
Okay, so I'm fine with that being used for, you know, having, making tasting notes and having pens and no wine on that, so that would be a condition I would have along with the restricting it to...
You're talking about conditions, not findings.
Right, I'm talking about...
You mentioned findings earlier, so you're talking about conditions of the permit.
That's what I'm going to suggest, conditions that we don't have right now, restricting it to 20 people on the patio at any one time. I've seen baby strollers out there and people just about, I've seen things I would like to not have in the future. So 20 people on the patio, the barrel should, I would like to have it in, in this new resolution, be restricted to what the staff said that should be used for information about the wine, pens and pencils, order, background reviews, whatever, no wine barrel, no wine...
Staff has language, we have it for all of the other tasting rooms about what can and can't be put out in front.
So that's not included in the...
Language already exists.
But I want to, that's what I would suggest...
We can make it apply to the barrel and make sure the barrel stays on the patio.
Right, so the barrel and the number of seats are what I'm suggesting that we add.
Okay, those are additional conditions that are being offered for consideration. Councilmember Doorman?
It's like being back in school, you don't know when you're going to be called on.
That's the whole point.
I know, it's very exciting. So I have some thoughts on the specific resolution and then a couple of overarching considerations. One is, I agree with Councilmember Mueller on the people, not seats and the barrel. I have a question on the catered meals. Under the original resolutions, they are limited to special events, and this resolution limits them to indoor only, but I want to make sure that's indoors for only special events. I want to make sure those, that restriction continues. I don't know if we need to say that or if it's just how they all fit together.
I believe that's listed in number two, the conditions of approval, is it not?
It doesn't call out during special events, so we can easily add that to make sure it's consistent with appropriate resolutions.
This proposed condition would limit meals at special events to indoors, is what I'm reading.
Thank you. Thank you.
On page 5 of 6.
Okay, I only read that it was limited to indoors, so thank you. So those are my, on the resolution itself, I mean, I would like to see service limited to 11 to 7, but I understand that they, their permit now says 10 to 8, so if they want to do that, I think that's fine. Also on the resolution, the revocation, I think Mr. Steele raises a good point, we talked about it in the first year, because this is a pilot program, but I guess perhaps the resolution should put some special teeth in it, because it is a pilot program, and say it can be more, I don't like to use the word summarily, but more summarily revoked during the first year, because it is a pilot program, so I would be in favor of that. And then finally, I think that when we talk about the special circumstances in our findings, I do think this is a special circumstance, because we have, the whole purpose of this program is they can use the parking they have. They have six spaces. As far as we know tonight, those spaces are not restricted. They can park their employees in those spaces. So I don't really understand why we are now saying we will give you four more spaces off-site, and you'll pay for them, and the good thing is that they are away from our residents' homes, but we are actually adding parking, which is not the purpose of the program. The purpose of the program is you're promising us you can use the parking you have despite having additional service. It's not a deal killer for me, but I think perhaps it should be called out as a special circumstance in this, to talk about that, and I think just as a general proposition, the fact that their parking burden is six spaces, but yet they're going to have seven employees, that's just something we need to look at a big picture another night, but for now, I would like to see something brought up in the resolution about this is a special circumstance, or I would like to simply say, we're going to go with the program as we thought about it, and we're not going to have the four off-site spaces, and I'm open on that either way.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
So I agree with Councilmember Mueller and Doorman on all of their additional points that they've made up to this point. I really want to speak to the fact of where I get concerned in all this, and that is new staff, new management, and these are direct quotes, new staff, new management, turnover, never fully staffed. And that brings us back to 18 months ago, when we had violations of the use permit, and it's still happening in terms of never fully staffed, the turnover, new management, new staff, and that was the reasoning before. And I greatly appreciate Mr. Maxwell coming out, but once again, this is about the four And I greatly appreciate Mr. Maxwell coming out, but once again, this is about the fourth face I've seen from Gerard in front of this council as well. And so, I just really want to drive home the point that, under number six, it says, "Any findings necessary or advisable on a case-by-case basis." I think this is definitely one of those. I don't think anybody has ever claimed that I'm not pro-business in this community, either positive or negative, but in this case, I think this is a special situation where we really need to stay on top of this. And I understand Councilmember Dorman's concerned about the parking. I was one of the ones who voted for the fact that we need to determine parking on a case-by-case basis, and this is one of those bases where we definitely need to be held accountable in our decision of if we're adding parking or not. And another point, too, about the first-come-first-served, I think we need to strike number 14 from the original, from that 27-17-08, because I fully, I fully understand the first-come-first-served, I just want to make sure that the proprietor's aware that it's open space. I don't want to kick out any of their paying guests to have someone eat a hot dog there, although it is one of the best hot dogs in the valley. And to my point also, given this turnover, this new staff, new management, I don't think it's acceptable just to get a monthly report about employees, I want a monthly payroll report, preferably from a third-place, third-person independent party, but if Vintage Estates is large enough to do their payroll in-house, then I want it to come from their payroll department. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Okay. I'm not in favor of striking the four seats for local visitors who are not, or visitors or residents who are not purchasing wine. I think that that was included in the original users' permit, and I don't know that we have the capability of striking it tonight from the users' permit. I do believe that it is special circumstances, because they have more staff than we realized, but we have many, many of the younger businesses in town, we do require them to be a part of a parking program, and so I have no problem with them being a part of the parking program and their being, you know, designating the spaces, or not designating the spaces, but having the permits and parking out of the way up by the cemetery. I do believe that we should ask staff to be aware and monitor if there are complaints from the public about never being able to sit there. I'd really like to know that, because that was one of the things that we had, and I know that the circumstances have changed, there are more outdoor spaces, and we all do want to have a vibrant streetscape, which is why we're thinking about allowing this through this pilot program. I do agree with Councilmember Dorman, that, no, Durham, that the monthly report should be based on the payroll, because that would be an accurate count of how many employees and the kinds of hours and things like that. I think capping it at 20 people, I'm sorry, but I do agree with that. It's also, as Councilmember Mueller pointed out, that's a very short wall, and it could pose a risk to, if it gets overcrowded on that, that someone might fall off that patio. So, but all in all, I do support, we talked about this, we do want visitors and residents alike to be able to enjoy the streetscape and the outdoors and the open, you know, open districts, open air. So, I can support this, as long as we do have these circumstances taken into consideration.
Thank you. I do find that all the findings, find the findings, they're, I think they're all met. I agree that we can put language in that says 20 patrons versus 20 seats, I think that that's something that would be appropriate here. I think we're also, we've been, in my opinion, I'm hearing things about what-ifs, and gee, this could happen in the future, and I'm not comfortable basing my decision on what-ifs that might happen in the future. We're being presented with an application that, that just, as it did with Stuart Sellers, add the ability for current staff to pour wine with current patrons sitting in the patio. It sounds like we're going off on what I would consider several tangents of concerns that don't currently exist and don't have a history of existing. I think the point has been very clearly made, it's been addressed already about past failures to comply, they've, they have corrected that. I see the new employees and new management differently than you do. I think that means that they have people that understand that they need to comply with the regulations set forth by this council and the town. The industry is, you know, turnover is part of the deal, so I don't see that as necessarily a negative for the, for the business. I really wish we'd stop calling this a pilot program. That connotes temporary, this is not a temporary program, we went through that when we approved it, that this is a new program, but it's not a pilot temporary program, and I think we're, we're losing that focus. I'm certainly not looking to encourage a business, a wine tasting business, to now serve outside and threaten at some point in the future, we may decide that you can only operate that way. That's not the intention of this program as I saw it, and I voted in favor of it, and I believe the rest of us that voted in favor of it believed it is a permanent change, so I just think that the term pilot is giving a connotation that doesn't exist. I don't see additional parking as necessary under these conditions. Again, we're not, there is open space available on a first-come-first-served basis, just like in several other businesses in town. We don't require signage in those businesses, and we don't require the seats to be reserved for non-patrons. We also have other businesses that have more than the employees that they are permitted to have from their original applications many, many years ago, and I don't see us calling out those businesses, because their business model has changed. If a negative condition is a result of those conditions, that's a different story, but we do have a high level of service in this town, whether it be hospitality, restaurants, wine tastings, whatever, and it does require additional employees to provide that additional service. And I think paying attention to the intent of those conditions is more important than analyzing the letter of those conditions, and that's why I feel comfortable with finding number one, as a matter of fact, unable to meet the parking requirements on-site. We know that that's a very crowded and congested parking lot now, because of the successes of the businesses there. I don't want to handcuff those businesses now based on that level of success, I think we can find other solutions there. So that, those are my thoughts right now. I support the, the business coming forward. We talked about, I think a half a dozen of our businesses in town bringing the idea of table service forward without changing employee headcount. We said, "You cannot add employees to do this," and everyone agreed, in theory, that would not happen. They're not adding employees here. If they have the capacity for extended hours or more employees and choose not to have those hours in that staff, that's purely up to them. So those are my thoughts, I can support it as it's being presented with the changes to the 20 patrons versus 20 seats, and if there is a concern by the council that the barrel is being misused, then we limit how the barrel can be used. I think that's a pretty easy fix if it's a problem. I've not seen it off the patio, ever. If they're attaching a sign to it, encouraging or discouraging parking or other behaviors, then I think that's an easy thing staff can take care of, I don't think it needs to be a condition in their permit. Those are my thoughts for now. If there's any further discussion, or if there's any action to be proposed, Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. May I ask you to clarify a comment you made, Mayor? I heard you to say no additional parking is necessary, meaning that you believe we would not need the four paid spaces? Or did I hear that wrong?
I don't think, without additional parking, I don't see the additional need for parking. I mean, without the additional employees, I personally don't see the need to add additional parking off-site in this, in this case, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, clarification that we want to try to explain to this, it's been staff's observation that the activity from that center is directing the employees to park off-site, and they're using the public right-of-way, and the effort in the off-site parking program is to provide compensation for that use, because, that's the intent, we've done it with Arena, because the property manager is really encouraging the other employees to park off-site, so that's where that's coming from.
So I'll clarify, I'm fine if the council feels the need to put that requirement in for the off-site parking, for the parking management plan, I just don't feel it's necessary, but I would support doing it.
And what I'm trying to say is, we're not increasing parking supply, we're being honest about how the existing public parking is being used in that area, it's already being used by the employees in that area.
Any additional questions? Further discussion, or is there a motion?
I have one more question about the resolution, item number 14 in Resolution 09, let's get the whole number, 281309, which says that, I had to open the wrong one, hold on, and what's in Resolution 271708?
Yeah, number 14.
Number 14. So, that, which was approved, says the applicant shall maintain on the patio one table with four seats as public open space for the use of the general public at all times. So, can we in this resolution undo that one?
How does that work, attorney?
Yes, the council may do so in this resolution. The effect of the action tonight is to amend the use permits that have previously been approved and amended, and there's a provision in the resolution tonight that says, "Any approval tonight amends the previous use permits to the extent they're inconsistent," so yes.
All right, thank you.
If they're not changed, they're maintained, and if they are changed, they take the place of the previous. Additional, Councilmember Mueller, or?
I'm willing to.
Councilmember Durham has a comment or question.
And I want to be clear, I made a motion, or I made a suggestion to strike it, because in the same ordinance is number four, which states, "The deck seating and bench seating are considered usable open space, and as such are open and available to the public for use without requiring purchase of wine or merchandise from Gerard Tasting Room." So, by striking number 14 or amending it, number four is still in place and still maintains the open space, so I didn't want to get rid of it at the expense of the open space, it was just for further clarification that it's first-come-first-served.
There's a redundancy there.
Can I get, ask you a question about signage, where are you on signage?
I, I'm, I've sent signage suggestions before, I'm for it, but we can't go back, we can only go forward, correct? We can't ask that we have one consistent open space now and then go back to the other places and ask for them to use it, it's only, it can only be used with the use permit amendment?
Well, you have a trigger mechanism, and that's why I'm saying, and you can make a change and try to be clarified, and so this is the opportunity, that that's something you want to do to reinforce, so that the public and the employees, you can do that, I'm just saying, but you can't go back with this action and apply it to another property, so that's all I would say is.
And you said that there are other places in town, we have signage that says, "Some of these seats are available to the public?"
We've encouraged the, I believe we have some clarification on open space use for the top of Protea, there's a sign, so I mean, it's, we, it's been something we've done on a few of the last, and I do want to remember, you've all, you know, we've made some minor, or excuse me, major changes in how we define open space, so this is an opportunity just to clarify your intentions, because if you want the public to know that they can go sit there, then I think it's fair to have some signage that says, "Public may be entitled to use," so that you can go up there and have a hot dog or sit down with your lunch. I think that's fair, because a person may not necessarily come to that conclusion looking at what we see on, right now.
Is there any other place in town that we require signage explaining the public can sit there that's on the street?
No.
I don't believe there is.
I don't know, the only one that I know of, we have, we do have the sign on Protea.
But that's upstairs on top of a building.
But it was designated, the only thing.
Understood.
Was there designated on the.
But we don't have any other, we have, in front of Protea, we have the bakery patio, we have several locations in town that have open space on the street, we don't require them to have signage saying, "Some of these seats are available to the public at certain times."
I'm gonna go back, I don't believe so, but as you can see on this particular property, it's had three different amendments over its time, and there's been some changes and clarification on that, so that's really your call, if you would like something to be clear, then you can, that's all I'm saying, and if you don't, that's okay.
Even in the, Sandra, you called it something out, sort of R&amp;D Kitchen, what was the term you used, where the.
Bosc.
Bosc.
The bosc. There's no signage there that says, "Public can sit here if the seats are open," does there? No, okay.
But there needs to be, in my opinion, sorry, but.
They're mostly open, so, but anyway, does that clarify?
It does, and so to round about, I would like to, because of the other open spaces, I'd like to consider it, yes.
Okay.
So, Councilmember Mueller, were you gonna propose a motion, is that what I was hearing?
I was going to give it a shot, and then, if I might want to make a friendly, another suggestion, I'm open to that while I do this. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 18-3461, approving a use permit amendment for the Gerard Tasting Room at 6795 Washington Street, Assessor Parcel Number 036-032-014, to permit wine tasting services in the outdoor deck space with the following additions, that a, that the barrels stay on the patio, and whatever other language staff needs, that we restrict the patio area to 20 occupants, and the seating as defined, so 20 people can be out there.
So, I just want to clarify with that, are you talking 20 people total, including employees, or are you talking patrons?
I'll go with patrons. I see heads shaking.
No more than 20 seats or patrons at any one time, correct?
I'm gonna say 20 patrons, and the seats, the tables and the seating cannot change as specified either.
Yeah, no more than 20.
Right, so.
So a two-part condition?
A two-part condition, 20 people, and the same amount of tables and seats, that we include signage to say that this is accessible to public who are not patrons.
On a first-come-first-served basis?
I don't really need that, we'll keep it simple, see how we go. I would also like to include that, or make the change that we include the monthly payroll report, and, no change to, I accept the parking that's listed in here. Did I forget anything on anybody's list? Nope.
Striking Condition 14 from the previous resolution?
Striking Condition 14 from Resolution 27-17-08.
And, I.
Let's just hear the motion, and then if you want to offer.
Yeah, there's, did I miss something in?
Okay, go ahead, if you want to amend her motion before she makes it, feel free.
Well, I'm not amending, I'm just making sure I captured everything.
So.
Did I forget something?
I know, I think we have different versions, the mayor and I, but I just want to make sure that the meals are for special events only, the catered meals are special events only, and then I would like something, I agree with you on the parking, let's allow the four off-site spaces, but I would like something in the special circumstances finding to talk about, this is a one-off, and this is why we did this.
Okay, I, I will include that as well.
And if those are included, and no one else has inclusions, I can second.
Well, the motion hasn't been made yet, so Nathan?
I would just like clarification on what Finding Six, what the one-off finding is, just so we can adequately record it.
Just clarify the language, Councilmember Dorman.
Oh, thank you. So, I don't have it written down, but I would want it to include something like, this is a shared space. a shared space, this is a tenant, the tenant is told with regularity they are not able to exercise their right to park an employee there and therefore to keep cars away from in front of our residences. We have offered these other spaces as part of the employee parking management plan.
That's very doable, and I think that's, that is a very unique circumstance, the way that is a unique multi-tenant shopping center compared to some other situations. I think we can definitely address that.
Did I get everything?
So, yeah, so if you're going to formalize your motion, we just need to have you hit the button and read it.
Hit the button. Let me get back. Hit the button. Official, I hit the button.
And I will second.
Is there any further discussion? Before, I'll, I just want to add, I'm going to support the motion. I don't agree with all the conditions that are being attached to it, but I'm not going to oppose the ability to have the wine tasting as we've said we want to happen. I think we're adding restrictions that are unnecessary, but I'll still support it. So with that, any further discussion? Please go ahead and vote. Hopefully, do we have a screen coming up, Julie?
Soon. He's not here yet, right? Ah, you got it.
And you all thought it was just fun and pickleball in town.
Okay, that passes unanimously. So thank you, and thank you for representing the ownership and the applicant today. Okay, that went really efficiently in short order.
[laughing].
We're not to you yet either, I'm afraid. We're going to move ahead to our first administrative item 10A, approving an agreement between, and actually before we get into this, do we have, is it too late, Gary or Steve, to flip items 10A and 10B? Clearly, the majority of the people in the room are for item 10B.
That's at the council's prerogative.
I'm going to go ahead and have us move 10B up. You're all still welcome to stay for 10A afterwards.
[laughing].
But we're going to go ahead and move on to item 10B, which is the plans and specs of solicitation of bids for the construction of sport court improvements at Vineyard Park. I probably should have warned staff that we were going to do that. We're ready to go. Tonight we have before you the plans, specs, and bid package for the sports courts at Vineyard Park. We are going, the majority of the information presented tonight is in your staff report, much more comprehensive. We're going to have a really quick overview and then be able to answer some questions if you have them. So a little bit of the project background. These courts were originally resurfaced, asphalt courts were resurfaced in 2011. Rain and flooding makes the surfaces unplayable mainly due to the slip sheet surface that was put on in the hopes that it would resolve some of the issues that they had with the court surface. We have done some modifications and repair to the courts, and it has helped a little bit. However, it didn't resolve all of the issues and it still is really unplayable when it rains or when wet weather is the primary weather condition. 2016, we started having preliminary design discussions, and we really were looking at trying to repair the existing surface with either some asphalt or taking up this surface and then doing some drainage repairs and putting down a similar surface. This picture shows kind of what the court conditions were in 2011. This is kind of one of the symptoms of asphalt, especially in a playing surface. So for those of us who aren't aware, streets are really, some of the benefit of cars on a street is it needs the surface together as the tires wear on the surface. The real challenge with a surface, a playing surface like pickleball, is it just doesn't have that same advantage mainly due to the weight and the movement of the traffic over that surface. So this is kind of a typical example of what it is now with the, as you can see, it's the surface, current surface is kind of, well, a description would be kind of like a carpet or a sheeted playing surface. So water gets up underneath this playing surface. It comes from the ground through the cracks in the asphalt that were visible earlier, even though many of them were repaired. More continue to open up. We did do some drainage improvements, as I mentioned earlier. It did help resolve, when I first arrived and we started looking at this problem, the surface was in spots about knee-high in bubbles. So it was really, really unplayable. It's still unplayable the way it is. It also really never completely goes away. The pickleball and tennis players will tell you that there are plenty of dead spots in this surface. If you can imagine a ball hitting that surface, it just doesn't preside the kind of fair play and kind of consistency that tennis and pickleball players really expect out of a playing surface. So we went through this 2016 design cycle. We did a topographic survey, proposed layout and location. So initially, we were thinking that we would improve the area with an additional pickleball only court in addition to the two existing courts. That layout didn't really work for a variety of reasons, mostly due to cost, but there were other considerations. We were really trying to struggle with the setbacks that were required for a design that included that additional space. We looked at the type of material and construction, the details, especially drainage improvements, and then of course access, the fencing, trees, some color options, and then timing and schedule. All of that came in the course of the 2016 design season. So topographic survey revealed mainly the fact that we just, we're going to struggle with trying to put that extra pickleball court anywhere without having an extended SEQA permit cycle because we were going to be up against some of the stream setbacks, beard ditch, and some other, some of that waterborne area would require a bit more permitting, which would drive costs. But really, the thing that really continued to drive the cost was just the cost of the materials and the design considerations that we eventually landed on. After trying to figure out a less, what we really wanted to do after hearing from council was make sure that we had a playing service that would both meet the needs of the people who are going to play pickleball and tennis, but also be able to be played throughout the weather conditions. So aside from playing in the rain, once that condition cleared up, then we, our expectation is that any surface that we propose to you all would be able to be cleaned off and basically resume play. Much, very similar to what the basketball court in the same area is now, where it suffers the same conditions. It's made of concrete and we really hose that thing off, broom it a little bit, and it's good to go. So it doesn't suffer from the same kinds of complications that the current tennis court, pickleball court, sports court does. So we came up with a, after talking to many design professionals and also the group, community of players, with a post-tension reinforced concrete surface, a few things to consider with a post-tension surface. Number one, it's going to be laid up over the top of the existing surface, so there'll be no additional demo. There won't be additional import of material. We looked at a lot of options. So one of the options we thought about was trying to just raise the entire surface by bringing in some import and raise it a couple of feet, and maybe that would solve it. However, after discussing it with both design professionals and installers, they thought that even then we would have the same problems because it's the asphalt that's kind of giving us the problem, not necessarily the location in elevation of the surface. So we soon arrived at the post-tension concrete as being the best possible surface for this location. It's also a watertight concrete, so it's going to help resolve some of the majority of the problems that we have with water pumping up through the surface. We're going to include some drainage improvements around the perimeter. Everyone we talked to said it may not be needed, but just because it's a relatively affordable option, we thought it'd be smart to include that as an extra precaution so that when in fact we tell you that this surface is going to be playable, it is going to be playable. And then we kind of presented several different color schemes to the P-RAC group. By the way, this is the ninth public hearing that this pickleball court has been to, including our CIP budget meetings and a variety of hearings. P-RAC was very patient with us and very supportive in trying to get the best possible product. So we have really tried to include everyone and also get the best possible design and performance out of the surface we're presenting tonight for going out to bid. So this is a color scheme we, that P-RAC, a group, and anyone who was in the audience voted on, and this was the color scheme they came up with. We think it's kind of, also meets with the rule, design sensitivities that our community has said is important to them. There are some rather garish colors that can be used. Really, it's a wide range on the palette, but this, we think, is, matches what Yountville considers acceptable. The pickleball and tennis players, not many tennis players, actually zero tennis players weighed in on this, but it wasn't because we didn't try. But they are very supportive of the color scheme. I will also say that you'll notice that there is no additional pickleball court as a new addition. What the pickleball community really wanted was a pickleball court layout that was designed for them specifically. If you've been out to the current tennis court and you look at the array of lines on the court now, I, for the life of me, can't figure out how they even figure out what's in and what's out. It's pretty confusing. They're a dedicated bunch and they don't complain much at all, but I could see instantly, and I kind of, I kind of felt like we fell short by not recognizing that earlier and offering this as a design option, but the pickleball community offered this a design option, saying, we don't mind waiting for the courts. We know we're going to have pickleball people out, and the tennis people will just have to wait too. It's just kind of what you do when you're sharing a dedicated court surface. So I thought it was a brilliant idea, and I think it really solved some of the design considerations, some of the, definitely the cost consideration that we're trying to manage right now, and it's just an elegant solution to a particularly vaccine problem that we were having. Again, the color scheme, as you can see, it's that, we call it buff or sandstone color with a maroon court surface. So there's two options that we're going to look at in the bid format. We're going to offer a standard surfacing format, which is most likely associated with what people see on a tennis court. And I think it's important to note that there's not a whole lot of difference in thickness for these surfaces, but a little bit of cushioning makes a lot of difference to old bones like mine and people who play on these surfaces. I'm sure we'll be able to tell you the same thing, although I am also sure that the community of players who play on these surfaces will be thrilled with whatever we're able to provide. So the first standard surface, again, it's the base, that five-inch post-tension concrete. They put on a resurfacer so that their product bonds to the concrete surface and then a color coat with the white lines. The next alternative that we'll offer, and one that we're hoping council selects, is the more resilient surface. It's a cushion tennis court system. As you can see, in addition to the resurfacer and the color coat, there's a cushion master base, and it's actually two different pieces of that product. That is a ground rubber that they apply, much like you would apply paint with a roller, and it goes down very quickly. So just to kind of go back over where we were at, the initial budget was $200,000 to complete the pickleball court. That was for an asphalt concrete pickleball court, so a basic asphalt pickleball, I'm sorry, sports court. The post-tension concrete surface alone is $216,000. So our budget was not even close based on what we have right now. It'll be about $300,000. That's the engineer's estimate for a standard surface, and in the neighborhood of $400,000 is our estimate for a cushioned surface. That, of course, includes the concrete post-tensioning and some of the ADA improvements we're going to have to make because we're raising it five inches. So there's going to be some ramp improvements and some other access tasks that are going to have to be performed as well. The current bidding environment is extremely hot right now. Even before contractors and the construction trades had our fire event to deal with, just the economy in general is very active. So we're noticing that just basic tasks like road building and the normal routine that we would see in a CIP are seeing increase in prices. So we probably are going to, our bids are, we're comfortable with them, but we just want to be aware that it's very hot right now, and that would have driven prices up in any case. Just to give you an example, the AC concrete asphalt surface would have been around $43,000, but probably is a little bit more now, probably closer to 50, so much less expensive. The bid format and process. So as I mentioned, we're going to provide now three, the base bid, which is the standard surface, the bid alternative, which would be the more resilient surface, and we're trying to work out some bidding language on giving the contractor some ability to decide timing, to see if that helps any at all with pricing. We've been, through this process, we've learned that during the summer, the, once school empties out, their construction season gets going, and that really kind of drains whatever capacity was in the area to provide construction services to our projects, gets consumed by the school building environment in their own schedule, which is driven by June to September. So we think maybe providing that additional alternative might provide some other savings. We're not sure exactly what that would mean, but we're going to try to craft some language to give the contractor the opportunity to provide that. So this will go, this package will be put together and out to bid by no later than March 20th. We have a 30-day bid window. That will give us back around April 30th, April 20th, when we bring back our bidding results in the May 1 council meeting and present it to you all again and get your recommendation on what you would like to do based on those results. So we think it's smart to go out to bid, see where we're at, and then give you all more information to make a better decision. And with that, I'm happy to answer additional questions if you have them.
So to be clear, you're proposing the bid includes both options?
Both options, and option three would be, is there any season that might be better for you all that would give us some additional savings? So it would be three options.
Got it. Councilmember, any questions? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. And Joe and I have spent some offline time on this too, so just a couple. The, will this be the same kind of surface as the basketball court?
No.
The one you said works really well?
Yeah, it'll be a concrete base, which is what the basketball court is made of. The basketball court is, I'm not quite sure what the painted surface is. Tennis courts are a very specific finish, mostly because of the wear that it gets from both the ball and the... both the ball and the tennis player. So, it's going to be in form the same, but there are some very specific differences between the finish on the tennis court and the finish on the basketball court.
Thank you. And then, you talked about we're going to include drainage improvements, although they're not strictly necessary. Do you have an order of magnitude of what the cost of those we might be looking at?
In the cost of this particular project, it's $15,000 plus or minus. I mean, it's, there's nothing out there that they have to dig around, meaning utilities. They'll get a piece of equipment out and lay that pipe within a day or two, so it's going to be $15,000 or less. I don't have that specific bid item in front of me. I apologize.
No, I just wanted to get, that's exactly what I wanted, thank you.
Honestly, it's really good insurance for the money we're spending, just to make sure that the problems that you all have concerns with, we're addressing with that design element.
And you mentioned we're going to have some ADA expenses because we are going to increase height by about five inches.
Correct.
Is that whether or not we go with the cushioning, it's just going to be an increase?
Correct. Yeah, that's the five-inch post-tension slab, so just that slab alone is going to require a ramp, some changes to the gates. In the scope of the work, it's a minor cost, but it is a cost, so we have to include that.
And then, the other more general question is, I know some other jurisdictions have put off projects because of the current bidding climate, not just the fire, but just the booming economy. So, could you explain what would be the effect on the court if we were to, and I appreciate you're trying to do bid language that talks about flexibility, but let's just say that we put off even going out for bid for a year. What would that do to the existing courts?
Yeah, it's hard for me to forecast what is going to happen outside of some major recession that we would be back in the '07-'08 bidding environment where we were winning the day on every bid and the contractors were trying to pay bills. Now, the tables have turned, so I would be reluctant to really say anything other than nothing gets cheaper. My concern is that we wait, and then we're not only paying about the same rate, but now we're adding the COLA, cost of living, and all the other price increases. You know, they just announced a tariff. Who knows what that's going to do, but that's going to drive some prices up. Basically, my concern is the best time to go is when you have the work available and you want to do the work. And if you want to delay, it should be based on real knowns and not unknowns, and I just can't predict what's unknown.
And a final question. If we put the bid package out and the bids come back higher than expected, do we have to accept a bid?
No, you do not. So, we will bring the bids in front of you. We'll give you our recommendation on the bids, but you all have the responsibility and the capacity to not accept our recommendation or to accept some of the alternatives that we may offer. I will say that in the past, and what we have heard is, especially for something like this, it's a very specialized service. There aren't, we really struggled to find more than one or two contractors that even provide this kind of work. So, if we get just one bidder, then that frees us up a little bit to do a little more negotiating on the project than we would if we get several bids and then have to just offer the one lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder to the council for your consideration. So, you're under, you're under no real constraint as to what you decide to do with the project.
Thank you.
You bet.
And if I could, I think what you really are is you'll know the real environment, so you'll be able to make a number based on real numbers, know what we need to do. Just one thing I want to point out is, we're talking about replacing or modernizing a piece of infrastructure that's been in the park for a number of years. And Councilmember Durham has always questioned, "Why was it built out of asphalt as opposed to concrete when it was built?" And frankly, that's probably a question Joe and I would like to ask whoever approved the project when the park was built, but really, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about now doing the renovation upkeep of an existing facility, making it more useful, identifying the issues, currently updating it to reflect use patterns, which reflects pickleball. But I just really kind of wanted to get that out there, that this is not a, you know, this is taking an asphalt tennis court, addressing the issues. You know, our take, not having been here when it was initially built and designed, but as most of the council and community knows, we have spent a number of years replacing failing asphalt paths throughout all of our parks, and the tennis court is getting into one of those situations. We thought we had a solution in 2011 that was going to be helpful, and as long as we were in a drought, it worked. And now, we're, so this is an attempt, as I believe several of the council members said, "Let's do it right." I'm also going to probably premise and have to take responsibility. Our original $200,000 may have been too low, even at the point when we put it in from a planning estimate several years ago. But I do want to echo what the Public Works Director is saying. Ultimately, if we get the information, then we, you have all of those options about whether to proceed or not, but you'll know what the real cost is. And if you don't do anything, the courts will continue to stay in their current condition and have some impact in terms of, you know, that. They won't get any better for the players. That's the one thing I will say is.
Other questions of the report? Any? Vice Mayor?
Yes, Joe, will you please clarify? I missed, actually, what was the surface that was $43,000?
So, that was, that's asphalt, that's what we replace, if we replace with asphalt, which reflects the original $200,000 CIP project, that's what it would cost to replace that existing court, resurface it with asphalt, and then place, the new surface would be $80,000 additional. So, we probably actually would have had the money if we had used asphalt, but asphalt would end up having the same problems that we have now and would cost much more to replace going forward. So, we're just trying to take what council has told us, which is, give us a product that's going to be able to withstand the site conditions and be playable for the people who want to use it when they want to use it. So, that's what we've done.
So, according to my calculations, it's either 300K or 400K plus 15K for the drainage and the ADA.
No, no, no. That's included. It's included, right.
Okay, thank you.
That's the package.
Any other questions? Seeing no others, we're about to get to you all. I do want to just start off, public comment, recognizing that an email was received. Annalika Wiling sent an email in support of the project, so I'll invite any other members of the public that would like to speak. I had a feeling Mr. Traumler's might be the first one. And I hear you're representing everyone in the comments.
Yes, I think the group here just demonstrates the popularity of and the importance of what you're deciding. I think what's great about the sport, we call it a sport, but it's really more than that to us, because it's about health, it's about social environment, it changes people's lives in a lot of ways, if you hear the stories that people talk about. And it includes people, from young people at the age of 12 to people over the age of 80, which is kind of the population of this town, which is great. So, I want to thank Joe. We've worked hard together in this project, coming something, coming up with something that fits the needs of both the tennis players and the pickleball players, and that's great. And I want to thank everybody here for coming out and spending this time to see how government And just a couple comments about drainage. One is, we play out there when it's wet, and we squeeze you down the courts and push water off, and it comes back on, because there's two areas, both on one side and the other, that are higher than the court, so the water keeps coming in. So, having drainage that is lower than the courts, even though they're going to be five inches higher, having drainage that is lower than the courts becomes really important to get the water off and have someplace for it to go, someplace that's positive there. And the aging population, or the population that we have here in Yountville, is higher on average, age-wise, than the population in most towns. And it's because of that, really, and because of our population that plays. This is a great sport for lateral movement. It's a great sport. I get, if I play a time a week, I get 10,000 steps in a couple hours. So, it's great for exercise. It's a very positive thing, but having the cushioning will allow the older players to play more and longer and over a more extended period of time. So, for it to really last for the particular population that we have here, having cushioning becomes important. Thank you.
Don't worry, he wasn't talking about any of you.
No.
Your audience turned on you just now.
Some of the older people couldn't come tonight.
No, they turned on you just now. I saw it. You didn't see that, but we saw it. Anyone else like to comment? You've sat through till now, you might as well.
Alan Tenscher. What I wanted to reiterate, just so that it is clear, and I did hear both Joe and others mention it, is that that is a very low area, and the biggest problem, or one of the bigger problems, is that water wants to intrude and lift any surface. So, the use of the post-tension concrete to create an impermeable barrier there is going to be a very important part of having that last. Whenever asphalt has been used, and my dad was a civil engineer, worked on highway design, that kneading is really important. It's just the wrong surface in that environment. So, it's a big number, but if you're going to go, you might as well do it the Yountville way and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else still looking to get their 10,000 steps in? No? Really? Okay. Yes, please, come on.
That young man at the end there is the youngest, and I'm the oldest.[1327.15][1327.15](Laughter). And the thing I want to share with you is my experience of playing pickleball in Yountville, because I've lived in Yountville for a long time, but I've never really participated in the town. And what this has brought to me is exercise and social interaction, but it's gotten me to sit through your meetings.[1353.15][1353.15](Laughter).
Now, I've lost the audience, too.
Yeah, and to be interested in it. And so, the fact that the gym is open to us so many days a week to play pickleball has just, it's so wonderful, and to have the outdoor be in better condition will be even greater. So, I just want you to know you're reaching a huge segment of the population.
If you could just offer your name for the audio recording, too.
Oh, sorry. It's Betty Priolo.
Thanks, Betty. Anyone else? We got the senior member. We could get the junior member.
Okay. Lori Hennig. I think that it's great. I'm all for it, and it's a plus that you guys have got this far and it's taken this long, but most courts are two-toned with the colors, and the kitchen is a different color than the back part of the court. Would that be a cost factor if we were?
That's right. No, it's not a cost factor.
Okay, so we can go with two colors?
That's what's being proposed, yeah.
Oh, good, because all I saw was just orange up there. I mean, or brick-colored or whatever.
It's two-tone.
I didn't see two-ton.
There you go. Yeah, the court is the burgundy and the rest of it is.
Oh, okay, okay. It was hard to tell from the picture.
Sandstone, yeah.
So, okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no other public comment, I'll invite discussion or action by the council. Any specific thoughts? And again, just for clarification, the bid would include both surface recommendations being presented by staff. There would be the ability to review bids coming in to see if they meet our, you know, our desires in terms of the cost and the ability to construct. Questions or comments, or is there a motion? Counselor Dorman, I think we'll go back to starting on this side.
I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Counselor Durham?
I'll just make a simple comment that, first of all, I'm glad most of you weren't here when I've voiced my opposition to this in the past, so I'm glad you're here tonight, because my discussion has been had with Joe about the water mitigation, the flood mitigation, the drainage, and that was always my issue, was all those things. So, based on that, I'm very excited about this moving forward. And I also want to be clear, agenda item 11A is talking about the outdoor exercise equipment, so I expect you all there 15 minutes before your game to use the exercise equipment.
Counselor Mueller?
I would just like to say that, first, I thank all the pickleball people who really helped with this design, because I think it is very creative, and being able to share both of those courts makes a lot of sense, plus avoiding preparing any secret documents. That, that's, you probably don't even know what that is, but it's huge. Let me tell you, it's really huge. So, thank you for that. I think this is a great design. And the only other thing I want to add is, you know, I don't know how many, I don't think any of you, maybe a few of you, might have been at our past discussions on water and wastewater rates. We hear stuff like, "Oh, you don't need this and you don't need that." There's different segments of the population that certain things that government can put the money towards and do are very important, and this, I think, is certainly one of them. You've really come out and demonstrated that you might not always go to the pool, or you might not go over here, but this is important to you, and I really respect that. So, I'm in favor, so. Been a long time getting here, so it looks like we're moving ahead. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
I've been so impressed with the sense of community that this has also brought to the town, in addition to the exercise and, you know, how good it is for your health. I haven't availed myself of the opportunity, but I might ask for special lessons sometime. But no, I definitely want to see the bids and how they come back, with the caveat that if they come back at $500,000, $600,000, we have to revisit it, but I definitely want to put this out for bid and see what it comes back and hopefully move forward. And, you know, it's my neighborhood, so I can quickly be over there.
And I just wanted, so the young gentleman, what's your name?
Miles.
Miles? We were hoping that we could get to this before your hair started to look like Mr. Traumler's hair.[1641.71][1641.71](Laughter). We're really pushing our luck. You know, I think, to be fair to council and staff a few years ago, when we tried to repair the conditions at the tennis courts, and it just didn't work, you know, priority was probably pricing. It seemed to make sense, and as the town manager mentioned, it worked while there was no real rain. We've known for many, many years that this is a wet area. It always will be, so we need to take the proper steps to mitigate that this is, it's a, you're always going to have the moisture issues unless you really spend the money to improve the facility. So, yes, it is a large number, but we don't want to keep putting $180,000 every three years either and give you something that's not going to satisfy your needs, your desires. So, we do pride ourselves on making financial commitments when it's important to our community and our residents especially, and I think this is one of those opportunities. So, it is a tricky bidding climate right now. We acknowledge that, so we'll see what the bids are when they come in, but there may be other sources of financing. There's parks and open space monies that are being discussed at the county level, as well as the state level, that might allow some of these types of improvements to be included. So, we'll certainly be keeping our eyes and ears open on that type of legislation going forward. So, I think you're hearing some universal support from the council up here, so all we need now is action to be taken. Is there a motion to accept the staff recommendation?
So moved.
That was?
So moved.
There we go. Thank you. And a second?
A second.
Get our screens on here and make it official. Please vote. That passes unanimously. And again, (applause), thank you. I think that all, that all goes to Joe and the rest of the team that helped make this come together.
Aaron, counsel, just since we have an audience that this may be of interest, and we've already moved the agenda, it might be nice just to do the quick overview of the survey results and the exercise equipment while we have an interested audience, because we'll lose them when we explain the bus. Because we'll lose them when we explain the bus subsidy agreement.
They committed to staying here. Okay, we're going to quickly move to item 11A and talk about the outdoor exercise equipment update. Now you have to stay, because he said you'd stay.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Priya Nixon, and I'm a management analyst in the Public Works and Finance Department. This evening, I'm pleased to speak with you about the exercise equipment update at Vineyard Park, which is, as we know, a park that convenes exercise. Where it's located is a network of paths. We have basketball court, and we have the sport court as well. So it's kind of an ideal and very beautiful place to place some outdoor exercise equipment. So going to go over the process that we took for this project, just a little bit of project history. So this was even before my time, but there were some informal discussions with residents that began a need for a type of gym space. And that discussion continued into May 2015, where Samantha Holland presented some information to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. And then Joe presented more information as an informational presentation to you, the town council, about this. And that resulted in this exercise equipment project to be put into the CIP in year three. And that was in 2015 and '16. Jump forward to this current year. We are in year one now, so this project is being completed this year. It was approved in that 2015-16 CIP. Joe's made a few updates to you as council about where we are with the CIP, so he discussed that on the 5th of December. And then I had the pleasure to present to the Parks and Recreation Commission in January, where I presented some survey results. So in your staff report, I've detailed more of the history of the project and the proposed location. We did do some outreach. In the outreach, we focused on a survey that 64 people took, which was really great. And we focused on three different body part areas, so lower body, upper body, and core. So for the core, the survey results indicated that the rowing machine is the machine of choice. And for upper body, the survey results indicated that the two-person combo lap pull-down and vertical press, now that's a mouthful, and the two-person chest press were chosen. And then for the lower body, we have the four-person lower body combo and the four-person leg press. And just to pause for a second, we actually went down and tried this equipment in Richmond. They have all the equipment that we are looking at, so we got to try it out. And as a very short person, I was able to easily do the upper body. And then with my short legs, I had no problem doing the lower body. So it's really built for any body type. Even it is ADA accessible for the upper body, so we're hoping to get those pieces as well for the upper body. And we also went on a rainy day, which I think was great, because we got to see how it withstands in the weather, and it really does withstand very well. We spoke to the facilities, people at the city of Richmond. And in terms of ongoing maintenance, the only thing that they said was there are arm, little hand grips, and sometimes those have to be replaced, but it's a very minimal cost. And it was a high-usage park that we visited, where people routinely have core circuits that they do. So it was good to know that it withstands a lot of the elements. And with that, I welcome your questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Questions of the staff report? Councilmember Dormand?
Thank you. Thank you, Priya. So is there a way to put this equipment in without adding concrete to our park?
That's a great question. So one of the things that we looked at with the vendor was the need for a slab or a straight surface to mount the equipment on, so that it can really withstand the elements and last for a long time. So we, they actually recommended that we keep it on a concrete slab. And I don't know, Joe, if you have any comments about that?
Sure. So the other challenge with all playground equipment, as you all are familiar with, is the height and distance requirements that the manufacturer and safety people provide. So trying to make sure that that grass element is matching that standard is always a struggle. The grass tends to get worn away, so it becomes a constant maintenance item. And then, as Priya mentioned, ultimately, just being in that wetter environment causes the equipment to deteriorate quicker, so it doesn't last nearly as long as it will on a concrete surface.
So about how many square feet of grass are we taking out?
600 feet. 600 square feet, roughly. 35 by 20.
So 20 by 30?
Yeah.
Yeah, 30 by 45.
No, it's smaller than that.
Yeah, 30 by 30.
How much is the, the 20,000 includes the concrete? Includes the pad?
No, we have some additional funds from ADA that we're going to use to help supplement that cost. So all in, it's 37,000.
And when you say ADA, that's still the town funds. It's just that it's in the designated ADA pot.
Correct.
And is it going to be permeable concrete? Because if we already have a drainage and a flooding issue there, I'm just trying to think of a way around putting 600 square feet of concrete where there's now grass.
Right. So in that particular location, we don't have a drainage or flooding issue. It's the surface of the tennis court that provides that challenge. The basketball court is playable all, basically all times, unless it's just completely covered in water. We're looking at, in discussions today with Public Works, Uniop staff, we're looking at a couple of different options. Our concern is we're trying to not tie up staff so that they can do other stuff. But we're looking at a surface similar to what you, what we have installed at the Hopper Creek Pocket Park, which is a stone product that is porous. So gives similar results as porous concrete, but we would be able to install that. So that's what we're looking at, trying to do. We're reluctant to use the porous concrete, because I'm just not sure of what that surface means in terms of being able to sink up an anchor into it and have that anchor be able to stay for the design limits of the piece of equipment. So that's our real concern with porous concrete.
And I've completely lost my train of thought. Well, if I, I'll raise my hand if I think of it. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Councilmember Durham, any questions? Other questions?
I do.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. I was hoping that there would be sort of a schematic showing where you were thinking of doing this. I have a couple of questions. What size is the playground area that is sort of, that there, where the children's playground used to be? That has the spongy kind of...
Actually, one of the things that we learned, this area would be that small sliver of grass between that area and the way the paths come out on a quadrant. So that's where we're talking about. We've actually had a request from users. The former area where we have the rubberized mat is very popular with groups that do yoga and stretching. There's actually some strong users that came out and expressed their desire that that may maintain. So we're trying to meet as many needs there.
What size is that area? That's my question.
That's probably about the same size for comparison. Yeah, I would say it's in that 20 by 30-ish range.
What, you need to put in a 30 by 30 concrete slab?
That's correct. So if you, you're very familiar with that area. So in between that area where it's rubberized mat and where the picnic table is at, there's a little grass area, the larger portion of that grass area will be used for the...
And how many, what is the total number of machines that you're going to put in there?
Five.
Well, I do have, you know, part of the reason that it's such a beautiful area is because of the green. And it just really, you know, but I do understand that it's over by the pickleball courts.
Correct. It is, it is not the green space beyond the basketball. So it's in that active area.
Okay.
So it's not taking up, I mean, it's, the green space that we're using is, has a path on three sides, and the rubberized mat with a sidewalk adjacent to you.
And so it'll approximately be about $57,000. Is that true?
No.
32.
I thought the ADA funds were 37. No?
No.
I thought that's what you just said, though.
The cost of the equipment is approximately 17,000 and change, and then the concrete work is an additional 20,000. So 37,000 total.
So that's how it's 37. Okay. All right. Thank you. Those are my questions.
And I think Joe mentioned, if we can use the other alternative surface, we'll look at that. Because if that's a positive cost factor, we can do that as well.
So we already have a water station nearby here, correct?
Yeah, actually, staff built a very nice chilled water station with a recyclable water bottle filler and a little shed roof over it, has a provision for helping the dogs.
And restroom facilities.
Yeah.
It's very nice. It's a very nice provision.
What are we doing about keeping the equipment clean? Do we have hand sanitizer, anything like that, that is being considered for people to continually use this? You talked about the grips, and as people use these grips, if it's a hot day, you don't want to be the one right after.
Yeah. And it's funny, because I didn't notice that at the Richmond facility. It's something that we could definitely look at and see what is available and try to find something that's an outdoor suitable.
I'm not sure what the right answer is. I don't know that we want wipes out there that end up getting discarded all over the place, but there might be something for consideration.
Yeah.
And we can certainly include it in part of the regular routine that the maintenance crews, in terms of looking at it. From an observation, when I was traveling in Australia, there was a very similar one on the Embarcadero in Cairns. And some of the participants brought their own.
Understood.
If they were really worried about that, I noticed two people, but in most cases, they didn't use the sanitizer.
Just something to think about as you're looking at the layout.
Well, the restrooms are in the vicinity, too. So if worse comes to worse, they always have that available.
Hey, so for a lot of folks, having to wipe down the equipment is a priority, not just cleaning your own hands, but cleaning it for the next person.
Yeah. I completely agree, as a former gym user, not a current gym user.
Any other questions? Did you have your frame?
Yes, I did. I got my gray cells rubbed together. So since this started before my time, what resident input or requests for this equipment have we had since the 2014-15 timeframe?
I'll take that one. And this is a great example of how staff works in some cases with ideas that are generated. Some people may remember that we used to have a facility called Yountville Fitness Center, or the Yountville. So when that closed, there was initial conversation within the community about what could we do to replace it? And then a lot of folks came to the town and said, "Town? What are you going to do? We want to exercise." We did some early requests where, can you add a facility or carve out space at the community center for an indoor fitness center? We did some initial analysis, and that just was not feasible. So based on that, the feedback from P-RAC was, what might we be able to do to continue addressing that concern? And then some residents brought in pictures. They'd been traveling and saw this in their travels. And then staff took that idea, continued to work with P-RAC. It got put into, I mean, like you saw there, it was put into the CIP budget several years ago, and then has, you know, incrementally moved forward to the year now where it's in place. So that's, like I say, that's, it's been a slow movement, but that's the genesis of, we don't have a local fitness center, not likely to get one. What could we do to meet the needs of some of the residents? So this is where, over that, going on three-plus years, of where we've evolved.
So it's fair to say we currently have significant, or somewhat significant, resident interest in these facilities?
You know, that's a, I don't know how to answer the question, Councilmember Dormand, that you're phrasing that way, because we don't, when we bring a lot of ideas to you, they start with citizen interest. For example, the Bridge Club. You know, we don't start with a minimum threshold number of participants. What I would say is that, for us, 64 people on our citizen survey response is a very strong response. Not just a good response, a strong. I think what I would say is there's active interest. The P-RAC's continued, and I think this is a reasonable cost. This is not a high-cost venture. It's something that we felt was reasonable to address the need and go from there.
Thank you.
But do, I do thank you for asking the question, because it really did come back from people asking, what can we do since there isn't something that we can go to?
Any other questions to the report?
And I'll point out, it'll be free. You won't have to pay a gym membership.
Any members of the public that have sat through so far, would like to comment on this? Anybody? We asked that you stay through the whole item.
Will you use it?
Okay.
Betty Priolo. I was in that gym, and it saved my knees, and it closed. And it was a disaster for me. So I was one of those people that said, what are we going to do? So one thing I'd like to add to the suggestion of the pieces I saw, they, you flashed on the screen, was a recumbent bike. That's something that is a bicycle that stays still. And in pickleball, a lot of people wear support on their knees. And a recumbent bike is the best thing you can do for your knees, other than swimming. And so I would like to have you look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Welcome.
Hi, Darlene DeBoclair. I'd just like to say, I think it would be a great addition to the facilities that we all have access to. Yountville is a wonderful place to live, as we all know. It would be very nice not to have to pay a gym membership and drive down to Napa. We have a great selection of classes available to us now, from parks and RAC, a lot of variety. We have our pickleball courts and programs, and basketball, and all types of other cardio activity, great walking. And it would be nice to have that strength-building equipment available to us as residents. And I know a lot of us walk, and that would be a nice stop along the way. Do some strength building and then continue the walk. So thanks for considering it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Hansi Jacoby. And I'm coming from Germany. We were talking about traveling and seeing the world and getting information. And the country where I'm from, in parks, it's very popular to have a concrete table tennis, ping-pong table installed. It is concrete framed with iron, so it wouldn't break on the edges, with an iron net fixed. Easy, withstands all kinds of weather, and people bring their paddles and play. It would be something, it's a popular sport. It would keep maybe the pickleballers warm while they're waiting for their next game. Just an idea, or just come and be active, all ages.
Thank you.
To consider that in the space of a park like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes?
Lori Hennig, again. I just want to say thank you. I think this is a wonderful idea. It's the first time I've heard of it. And I've always missed the pit-stop exercising stations that were near the bocce ball. I don't even know what year it was. So I think this is a great replacement. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay. Council deliberation or action?
Just...
No action.
Information...
This is an update.
You're going to put the bid out.
This is, no, no, we'll get the...
You're going to spend the money.
Right. This is in the budget. This is the current action. We're just sharing with you the results of the survey.
That's right.
And we'll fine-tune the surfacing, and if we can come in with a lower cost... And we'll fine-tune the surfacing, and if we can come in with a lower-cost surfacing, we will do that and keep you apprised.
I forgot we jumped to the informational reports. Okay. So it's already happening?
Thank you.
That'd be great, I can practice.
We are going to.
Pickleball court.
We could keep going until ten.
Ping pong's a good idea, so.
Okay.
Don't leave now.
We are going to hopefully quickly go back to our item 10A, followed by 10C, but 10A is a resolution approving the agreement between Napa Valley Transportation Authority and the town for the Yountville Transit Services. So welcome Nathan back.
This is the most exhilarating item on the agenda, so I'm glad you saved it for last.
It's not last.
For me. In August of 2001, the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, then known as NCTPA, and the town executed an agreement that transferred the responsibility of providing Yountville shuttle services in the town from the town to NVTA. And since that time, the Yountville Trolley has become a staple of the community and really a key mode of transportation for Yountville residents and visitors. As you know, the Yountville Trolley provides door-to-door transportation for those that can call in, request a ride, and after picking up a customer at their location, the trolley will then transport him or her anywhere in Yountville. Now, the town council approved a memorandum of understanding with NVTA in 2012, and that was originally scheduled to expire, but then it was extended. The most recent extension was November 21st, when the town council adopted Resolution 173443, which amended the MOU to extend until June 30th of 2018. The reason that date was chosen was because the beginning of the next fiscal year, NVTA has sent a new version of the agreement out to all of the agencies that it offers this service for, mainly American Canyon, Yountville, St. Helena, Calistoga. All received the same agreement, which is what you're looking at this evening. The current MOU terminates June 30th, 2018, so this resolution would approve this agreement that would start July 1st of this year and extend out until 2022. So while the bulk of the agreement is for the most part the same, there are a few changes that I did want to outline for you, just so they are known. So in the past, NVTA has invoiced the town each quarter 10% of its operating costs of the trolley. In this new agreement, the town will pay 10% of the annual fully allocated budget of operating expenses prorated over four quarterly payments. At the end of the fourth quarter, NVTA's invoice will include the prorated amount. The change actually provides the town with a better estimate of cost when creating its annual budget, and it makes creating the purchase order easier on both ends. This just was an easy fix to make. Second, the specific reference of Yountville Trolley have been removed and replaced with the more generic transit vehicle as transportation may change between now and 2022. NVTA has established a capital fund to help cover the cost of new vehicles. The town will contribute $5,000 annually to serve as a local matching fund for this capital fund, and the fund is dedicated really for the replacement of this transit vehicle. It also appears in the other Napa County jurisdictions agreements, there's a separate capital fund made for each city's transit vehicle. And so that sums up the primary differences. Now, over the past three fiscal years, the town has contributed an average of approximately $32,000 to the fare box in order to make the trolley free for users to use it. That isn't going to change, it's still probably going to be around $32,000, only now with a $5,000 annual match for this new capital fund in order to plan for the future and planning for replacement vehicle. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
So the only real fiscal impact is the $5,000 additional?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions about the staff report? Councilmember Mueller?
I do have a question, and maybe it's not a question to staff, but maybe one of our ETA members here, that I have a question about the fare box. I know we have a whole new system in place with apps and going through dispatch and everything. Do we have any updated numbers? I mean, my concern is if we really are falling off, is there a greater likelihood that we might have to increase our fare box? Or do we have any information right now? Besides, it's anticipated that it'll be the same?
So the cost, the $32,000, again, that's an average approximate number, is meant for, it pays for part of the operation.
No, I understand all of that.
And it's the fare box contribution that way.
Right, I understand what the fare box is, but if we don't have as many riders, the fare box number could go up.
We basically are buying out any, we don't use a fare box, so we're buying what they need to make up their operating rather than using the fare box.
Okay, so it's really a misnomer then?
Right.
It's called fare box contribution, it's really in lieu of fare box contribution.
So what I'm saying.
That's wrong, my question.
Other jurisdictions have an actual fare box, it's their terminology.
Yes, you pay a fare and the other cities make a partial contribution. We are the only Napa Valley community providing completely free local transit service with our vehicle. And just everybody does know, because we've mentioned it, and I think we've shared before publicly, but the NVTA has purchased a new electric vehicle, and that is in the process of being manufactured, and at some point in time, our, you know, what is currently the Yountville Shuttle will be replaced by a very modern, sustainable electric vehicle.
It doesn't break down nearly as frequently as our trolley does?
We hope.
Vice Mayor, question?
Yes, I noticed in the, maybe in the legislation text or in the agreement itself, it talked about how we had approximately 4,300 riders, and I was wondering if it does fall off or if it does go over, is our cost tied to the number of riders? Okay.
No.
We're buying out the fare box upfront.
I understand.
We have a fixed contribution number.
And the other thing is, I also noticed that it talks about in Yountville, it will have an established route, and there will be door-to-door service. Is that something that, are you able to hail the, or pick it up on Washington Street somewhere and say, "Please take me to my house" without calling in and going through that whole process?
It's similar to how it is now.
Well, I don't know how it is now.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So it has the route where it follows, but you can always call in and it will defer from the route, and if you wave it down or call, it will stop along there and you can get it.
That's all current and it'll continue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Durham?
So I have questions about the employees driving the trolley. Who's, who, I, we emailed before. Who is responsible?
I'll take that one for a minute. I think I want to simplify this right now. Our agreement is with NVTA for funding the fare box, not for the actual operation of the vehicle. The town provides the funding, we provide marketing assistance. Napa Valley Transportation contracts with TransDev, and TransDev is the operator, they just recently went through, NVTA did a contract bid, but TransDev operates all of the drivers for all of the Vine equipment, all of the dispatch. So that relationship is between NVTA and TransDev.
So who's responsible when the trolley's driving down the street and the driver's on their cellphone, not using a headset?
We have twofold. One, NVTA has a staff liaison, much like, you know, we take a responsibility for the actions of our contractors. So the first source would be to contact NVTA staff. Matt Wilcox in particular is the transit manager, Kate Miller is the executive director, so that they can do that. In some cases, if we know information, we also have a regional manager from TransDev. So I mean, if there's a customer service complaint, it can go either to TransDev or NVTA staff. But that's a great clarification because the town does not operate the transit service, nor are they our employees.
So knowing that, I'm, this is rhetorical, but I called the trolley last Saturday, get on it, and, yes, I was at Red actually, and I get on it, when I'm leaving Red and he's traveling east, and he proceeds to go try to drive through Heather Street to get me home to Yount Street. So he didn't even know the town. So my point is, is we've been listening to how hospitality and service is so important in this town with the wine tasting rooms and whatnot. At what level are, I mean, they're not even trained on our one-by-one town to get us or our tourists back to where they're going. And the tourists have no clue anyways where they're trying to go, they're just going to trust that person. So I understand everything you're saying, but my point is, just as with the tasting rooms, these people are a representative of Yountville, and if they can't even get me home to not go down Heather Street, I mean, that's, and so my point is, I'm questioning the level of training, the level of employees, and the level of, if we're paying $38,000 a year, I expect that driver to get in behind the wheel and know the streets of Yountville. So I just want to be clear on that moving forward.
I'll just mention before I ask Councilmember Dorman that NVTA staff and the board on which we sit have addressed, I would say numerous employee, either behavior or operational concerns in other jurisdictions as well as ours. They have committed to a tighter communication with TransDev, remains to be seen if that actually plays out. Most of the other issues have been dispatch-related, but some operational. And so it's a concern, it's been addressed directly to the TransDev leadership because it does impact their ability to get their contract renewed, basically. But I would suggest anytime we see either violations of professional service or concerns like how are they delivering service, we should contact, as Steve said, NVTA staff, so that gets recorded and they would then communicate to TransDev.
Good, thank you very much.
Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. The retention, records retention language in the proposed MOU, I just want to make sure it comports with our most recent records retention policy. We're all good there? There are parallel?
Yeah, and Gary can comment if he feels differently, but there's no issue between our retention schedule and the retention schedule referenced in here.
And the other thing is, when we talk about our historical costs, it's been, I think you said around $32,000 a year. I just want to point out that the current MOU excludes only New Year's, Labor Day, New Year's Day, Labor Day and Christmas Day. The new one carves out, I think, Memorial Day and reduced service on 4th of July. So do we expect our costs to go up because we then have to pay cost of service on those, on additional days per year? And it may be minimal, I'm just asking the question.
The short answer is, our budget includes some funding for additional days, most, we buy, one of our popular ones is New Year's Eve service, and we have occasionally put a second vehicle in. So your budget is more than $32,000 because the budget includes our funding capacity to buy the additional service when we schedule it. So that's how I would answer that question, Councilmember Dorman, is we need to make sure that we schedule the additional service timely above that, and in some cases, it will be at a premium rate because if we're having service on a legal holiday that the NVTA and Vine Transit is not normally serving, that's when we pay a premium.
But do you expect that to go up since there are now more days carved out?
I'm, that's nominal in the grand scheme of things, but in theory, yes, because if they carve out more than, that would be, you know, that may mean we have three or four of those days that we are paying for rather than two or three.
And I don't think that's NVTA-driven, I think it's the negotiated contract with TransDev and their union employees.
And that would be, I mean, but I think to your point, that would be, you know, we'll look at that and it might behoove us to round the transit subsidy allocation up a few thousand dollars just to make sure that we have that capacity. That would be my suggestion for this year's budget.
And then the last thing, and this kind of goes to Councilmember Durham's point, not exactly, but somewhat, I, on the liability issue, I went over in some detail with our town attorney on the liability and he, about who's responsible for what, if, while, let's say a driver is on a cellphone and an accident occurs. So the town attorney has assured me that he feels we are well-covered. We might have to trigger our indemnity, right to indemnity, but we are in good shape on that.
Any member of the public have a comment? No? Vice Mayor, do you have another question or comment?
Well, I have a question of Councilmember Dorman, because I didn't see the carve-out days. Did it delineate all of the carve-out days?
I think it did. I went back and compared one to the other, and I don't think I have those pieces of, many pieces of paper.
That goes beyond, I think what Nathan may have called out as changes, it's just comparing the old agreement and the new one.
Right. I think now they include Memorial Day, 4th of July.
I think you're talking about Section F on Number Two, where it talks about the days that it would operate and the holidays that have service. Is that what you're referring to?
I see. Okay, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day and Christmas Day.
I'm sorry, comma, unless special arrangements for service on these holidays is arranged at least 30 days in advance, town will be charged separately. So the real premise is yours truly has to make sure that I, 45 days ahead.
Okay.
So seeing no other public comment and no other questions, is there action to be had on this item? Councilmember Durham?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-3459, approving an agreement between Napa Valley Transportation Authority and the town of Yountville for Yountville Transit Services with a termination date of June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Second, Councilmember Mueller. Please vote when the screen appears. Another dramatic pause for the screen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass unanimously, and we'll confirm it in the record. Please confirm it in the record, there we go. All right, we are now going to move on as soon as the computer allows us to, to go to Item 10C, introduction and waving in the first reading of the municipal code as stated.
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, final item for the evening. For you tonight is.
Not for us.
Oh, sorry. Before you tonight is an ordinance amending Chapter 8.05 of the municipal code, which contains the town's administrative enforcement procedures for code violations. Administrative enforcement is one of several tools that town staff can use to enforce the code, the others being civil and criminal enforcement in court. These procedures allow for town staff to handle it administratively in-house, it's usually more cost-effective and efficient and more timely this way. Over the past year and a half, there's been an increase in code enforcement efforts here in town, working with Sandra and other staff here, we encountered some issues with the current Chapter 8.05, particularly when to issue a notice of violation, when administrative citations can be issued, including fines and penalties, when one must be done before the other. State law is fairly specific about those procedures, and the code was not entirely clear. And so that in conjunction with a few of the other sections, which were rather lengthy and a little bit confusing for everybody, including someone who read through them carefully several times, it was decided that it might be good to look through the whole chapter holistically and revise it in a way that simplified it and provided clear direction to everyone, including members of the public who might read through it, but also town staff that are using it to enforce code violations. So with that in mind, this is an overhaul, it does replace all of Chapter 8.05 with something that I think is more clearly stated and easier for everyone to use. So with that in mind, I'm happy to talk about code enforcement for as long as the town council would like.
Very good. I'm going to start again. Councilmember Mueller, any questions to the report?
No, I think it's very well-written, and when I read through the whole thing, it was all very clear, so I'm fine with it. Thanks for doing it because I saw the red line, it was, yeah, a lot of work, thanks.
Councilmember Durham?
And I just want to be clear, I had emailed you earlier. And I just want to be clear. I'd emailed you earlier. This overhaul is specifically because of two specific situations I can think of that have come before this council that we have had to deal with this type of situation. So, by doing this, it improves that process, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Dormin?
I don't have any questions of staff. I've spent a long time with the town attorney on this. I do have some discussion points later. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have two questions. One is, under the definitions, I noticed that there are definitions for different kinds of violations, but there also are referred to an infraction and there's in the code, but there is no definition of an infraction, which I think should be added to the definitions.
Yeah, so what I would add to that is, the beginning of Yountville's municipal code, there's a provision, a chapter, called General Penalty. And what it says is that any violation of the municipal code can be either an infraction or a misdemeanor based on town staff's discretion. The reason why infraction is called out in this ordinance in particular is state law says that if the town is going to treat a code violation as an infraction, if it would otherwise be enforced as an infraction, then the administrative fines are limited to $100 for the first violation, 200 for the second, and 500 for the third. And so, infraction, while not defined here, is defined in the beginning of the code and also in state law generally. An infraction is a criminal penalty that does not carry any jail time and usually has a fine a little bit less than a misdemeanor.
Well, someone in the public may not know that when they're reading it, but as long as it is in the definitions, in the beginning.
It is, yes.
All right. And my second question is, in 8.05010, in talking about the alternative methods of code enforcement, the way that it's listed is criminal, civil and administrative, which sounds punitive to me in a way, whereas I think it, you know, administrative, civil and criminal is the same thing, but it doesn't start out with something that sounds so punitive. Is that a change that could be made?
Absolutely. The order that those are listed, I don't think changes. So, those can be changed.
Any other questions?
I have, no, I have a, one thing I just want to stress, we're not changing the philosophy and the approach that the town uses towards code enforcement. And I want to stress that because the council has made it very clear that you want us to use an education approach. And in fact, it's frustrated the council at times when we've used an education-first approach. And I just wanted to get that out there, that the philosophy we use is, sometimes people don't know they violated something. And we, you know, some people would argue we bend over backwards to try to work with them, but we do take a education approach, several notices, and give a person, because our objective is to obtain compliance, not to penalize, not to write tickets. So, I just want to say that it's not changing the philosophy with which we approach code enforcement. And that's, I think, an important thing to footnote. What we're just finding is that we would trip ourselves up over whether it was an infraction or an administrative citation. And that's where we wanted to be clearer in terms of how we could do that in a more efficient way. I just, I want to get that out there because we didn't, I'm really cautious of setting the table and making sure people understand what's changing and what's not, and the approach to how we deliver. You know, unfortunately, what has changed is we've had more situations that are generating code enforcement in the last several years than we've experienced. But you've also asked us to be responsive to those changes.
Thank you. Any member of the public have a comment? I see one member of the public. She has a comment. You couldn't spend the entire night here and not speak, could you, Pam?
Well, I came specifically to speak. Pam Reeves, 6887 Jefferson Street. After hearing the comment from the town administrator saying that the aim is educational, I would say that when I read this whole passage, I would say it sounds punitive to me. And it also doesn't really reflect as much community participation when the enforcement is handed over to a contract employee or the town administrator is the last stop for an appeal. It seems like the town council needs to be kept in the loop of that, and the last stop before litigation should be the town council because you represent the community. And I feel like when we get so tightened up in the language that it's an autonomous train running, that the community is not really reflected in that wording. So, I would ask that the council consider some kind of softening of the language to allow for an appeal to the council before it goes to litigation, and also maybe clarifying the need for enforcement because I think there are a lot in the community who see some small infractions being enforced with a little bit of a heavy hand that we aren't used to in this town. So, I would also like some clarity on what are the enforcement procedures and what are the impetus for enforcement? If it's community complaints, maybe we need a community group who handles complaints as well because it is the community enforcing our own rules rather than hiring the dirty work out to whatever level it gets handed to. It's really us enforcing our own rules, and I feel like this kind of language sort of leaves us out of the loop.
Thank you. I think part of what's driving this is the fact that we do have residents that have violated conditions that staff has had to monitor, and not everything would elevate to being brought to the council.
I think, well, there's several things. I mean, I think Pam approaches something, I'll be very honest, some communities have a zoning and appeals design board. I don't know that that would work in this community in terms of the level of education. And, I mean, to be perfectly honest, most of our complaints are complaint-driven. Their residents or other people sharing something or something that is fairly apparent. I do want to start to the first part because unfortunately, this provision is all about what happens when we don't get compliance. So, the one thing that I think we could put in there would be, and Gary and I can work on it, would be sort of a preamble as to our philosophy. And then in the event when we are not successful with education and our initial outreach, this is the approach we use. Because it is. I don't have a problem with us saying that that's our approach, but that's where we go down. You know, if you want to add another citizen body that would review all of these and the staff support, that is certainly, that would be necessary to support that.
That's not what's being presented to us tonight.
No, no, but I'm just saying if that's...
So, let's just be clear about what we're discussing tonight.
But I do think we could add a...
Okay. So, Gary, would that type of preamble change the first reading that would have to be modified, or could it still be presented tonight?
I think I would need to draft it and bring it back, frankly, just because...
Well, let's see if there's any interest in that before we say that's the direction we're going to head.
And the only thing I would add is that the way this is drafted, it gives maximum discretion to staff to evaluate things on a case-by-case basis. And so, there are some things that are education, and there are some things that, depending on the code violation, might be worthy of an administrative fine or a penalty in the first instance.
I think we have to be careful to send the message of, we're not going to enforce our own laws until you violate it multiple times or ignore it multiple times. That's a little bit of a dangerous precedent to set, or why have those laws in place in the first place?
And I will say, the alternative is criminal proceeding in court, so.
Thoughts? Councilmember Durham?
Can you speak to her comments about it coming to the council? If I can think of, and I just assumed, which is probably my mistake, but when I can think of the last two issues specifically that all these came up in different parts of town, it did come to the council. So, my bias was already that that was in here. Does that need to be a part of the process in here?
So, the way the ordinance is currently drafted, staff would issue a notice of violation or a citation or a payment order. That's appealable to a hearing officer, which is either the town manager or a designee. And in 99% of the cases, that's a designee because the town manager is involved in the decision-making process on whether or not to issue the citation in the first instance. And when that happens, you need an unbiased hearing officer to come in and actually hear the appeal. From there, the hearing officer issues a written decision that affirms, modifies or reverses what staff did. And if the person who's responsible is not happy with that, the next step is a court action.
So, there's no town council?
That's correct. The way this is currently drafted, it does not have an appeal to the town council. The previous code enforcement matters that came were in the context of some other issue that came up, and so the town council wasn't made aware of it. I will say, different jurisdictions do it differently. It's not uncommon to have an appeal to the council. This is also a common way to do it, though, to have a hearing officer do it, and for a couple reasons. It's, and I...
So, I don't, I'm sorry, because I understand the hearing officer.
Yeah.
But then, my question would be, you're saying other jurisdictions would have it come to the town council instead of judicial?
Yeah. Well, what I would add is, there's a lot of different ways to set this up. There's no concrete procedure in state law that says the town must follow XYZ. What is required is just general due process, and so how that is set up is left largely to the council. The hearing officer is quick, it's efficient, it's cost-effective, and so it's frequently used by local jurisdictions. Some have an appeal up to the council. That has its downsides and its upsides, too, and that's a decision that the council can make.
And I would say that's up to your discretion. If you would rather have that come to you rather than a hearing officer, that's your discretion.
But if I'm hearing, and that's my confusion, and I'm sorry, but that's my confusion. Have it come to a hearing officer, I'm fine with, but if there is an appeal process, then have it come to us, correct? Is that a decision?
You could also do it that way, yes. That would be, I guess what I'd say is, that may be an unnecessary layer in the process. The hearing officer currently serves as the appeal under this system. So...
So, and I greatly appreciate your explanation. So, then, to understand this correctly, possibly, I mean, I think of Chichio, the elephant in the room, that had this issue. It came to the council. So, at what point am I being confused here?
The actual code violation and the code enforcement matter did not come to the council. It was in the context of the use permit.
Very good. All right.
But what I would say at this point, if the council, I mean, we've drafted it this way, if the council would prefer that the appeals come to the council directly, we can make that change. That is, I mean, that's your call. That is something that is...
In a community of this size, do you see an issue with that?
I, no. I don't see an issue with either way.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Durham, or Dormin? I almost got through the whole night without that. That's what I get for changing the order.
Thank you. So, I am very happy to hear all these comments because although I am always the first one to say, don't have an ordinance if you're not going to enforce it. I also will say, in reading through this, I understand the system that is being proposed, but I find the system lacks transparency. Basically, the way it's set up is town manager or his designee is basically making all decisions about code enforcement, whether to assess a fine or penalty, how long a violator has to pay a fine, making a final decision on appeals. And council is really not involved in any of that and not aware of any of that unless and until it goes to court, or unless it comes forward as a report from a staff member, which has happened, but there is nothing to make that happen. So, one of the things that I had asked about was kind of the preamble idea, but on steroids, if we would be within our purview, to set out our guidance to staff because that's our job, is to say, here's our guidance on how we would like our ordinances enforced. Here's who we want to do it, here's how we want it to happen. And my understanding is that would, to be actually memorialized for the public to see, which I think is very important, that would have to be done as part of this ordinance. And some of the things that I would call out specifically that has brought me to this conclusion is, currently, our enforcement officer and hearing officer are limited to town employees or agents of the town. Under the proposed, it is simply any individual designated by the town manager. Now, I understand there are some general limitations on his power, and we are very fortunate we have a town manager who would not approve that, but we are looking down the road on this. So, that is out of our hands. Right now, a person with a violation has 15 days to appeal. It's being changed to 10. Administrative fines and penalties are in the sole discretion of the enforcement officer. I think at a minimum, right now, the current language says administrative penalties are reserved for, quote, serious or ongoing violations, and they require a notice of violation as a prerequisite. So, I think that is, those are things that are changes that make it less transparent. Right now, there is a 30-day minimum for fines to be paid. Under the proposed language, there is no minimum. It can be five days. It can be two days. I also think it should be, we should send our notices to all known addresses, not just a known address. I think we have a burden and obligation to do that. We, this, I think, was just an oversight. We currently allow payment by credit card. It is not spelled out in the new proposed ordinance. We also don't, and I think this is probably a carryover, but something I think we should look at, we don't require anyone from the town to be there at the appeals hearing. And I just think that is a bad look. I think someone should have to be there. I agree with what I think I hear Councilmember Durham saying is, and I'm going to be a little stronger, I think either council or some sort of a citizen review board should have the final say-so on any appeal. And I also would note that by the time you get to the appeal process, you have to pay your fines unless there's someone other than council saying, we will defer them or we will waive them. So, I completely understand. We have got to be able to enforce our ordinances, but I would like to see it being done, and I don't want to be the one who enforces the ordinance. I don't want to take staff's job doing that. They are doing a great job, but I do want us to take up our mantle and give some guidance on this in a way that makes it transparent to our residents and our businesses, the ones who are going to be cited for these violations. And I would like to give, I would like to not go backwards in making it doable for people to bring themselves into compliance rather than be punished.
Other comments? Councilmember Mueller or Vice Mayor?
Well, I, my third note that I had made to myself, and I didn't mention it before, was why is the hearing officer always and only the town manager and/or his designee? I, too, believe that at a certain point for, when there is an appeal, it should come to the town council. And, you know, I don't know what, at what point that is. I'm not a legal mind, but I also do believe, I also feel like that there is no transparency. I don't even know sometimes what the, what the conditions are under which you're, you know. So, I think there's more work that needs to be done. I'd be happy to come in and talk to both of you, you know, about what I'd like to see in it. But I do believe that, you know, hearing officer, who's that? see in it, but I do believe that, you know, hearing officer, who's that? And are they a town member? And, you know, so I've got a lot of caveats about this, and it started at the very beginning when it was, you know, first a criminal, then civil and administrative, you know. It sounds like it needs work to me.
Did you have something to add before I give my comments, Steve?
Oh, no.
Okay.
A little after the comment.
So let's not kid ourselves. Violators are not going to read a preamble that tells people how our philosophy is stated. Violators violate, yes, on occasion, it's accidental, most of the time, it's intentional. There are processes in place. I would guess that not every citizen has read through this entire thing to know what the rules are, but anyone, whether it's a home business, or it's a violation of an existing use permit, or whatever, it's on that business owner to read the rules and to follow them. A citizen review board, to me, is a terrible idea. I think it sets up people to be lobbied that aren't necessarily legally prepared to evaluate and make a decision. I think that the council's role is quite clear as we set the content of an ordinance like this. So I'm not, I'm not getting where people are worried about the transparency. There's some, some details in here that I think make total sense to tweak, but the majority of it, I think, is appropriate. Let's also understand, we got here because we have people that have taken advantage of the soft-handed approach we have taken historically. Let's just be clear about that. We do not go after people who violate and are at the highest level of discipline. That's just not the way we have ever operated since I've been around, and we, people have taken advantage of that. They know it. And so this is a response to others who feel like, why are people being given such a break when they, in often cases, knowingly violate the law? So I see it a little differently than what I'm hearing, but what I am hearing universally is that we need to revisit the language. I don't hear us introducing this version tonight, even if it's just to change the wording of the criminal, civil, administrative to administrative, civil and criminal, or adding a preamble, or even some of the other tweaks that have been proposed here. If the council has more guidance to give, but I think it's been fairly thorough, that another shot at this makes sense.
I'm going to say yes, but I'm also going to say that I don't think your guidance has necessarily been thorough or helpful.
It's not going to be, we don't have five similar opinions.
Correct. So what I would ask to help us do a better job is that you send some specific comments, because we can do that. I think a sort of a preamble, I think we can work on that. That seems to make sense for the philosophy to describe that. I hear that. We'll go through. I have no qualms at all with the council being the appeal body. If you want to be the appeal body, that's certainly your prerogative, and I'm just going to say...
Majority of us did not say that. Let's just be clear about that.
I don't know what the majority said, so I'm just saying the majority. But I also want to say, in my 11 years, we have had three matters that have went to a hearing officer. We have generally been successful with our education, notice of violation, and on occasion, having to tell people, "You're now getting a fine." One of those, you saw earlier today, those folks received a fine. We have a very significant code enforcement case that's very unique, that we've been working, two of them this year. You may remember the Madison Street case, and then we've got an Oakleaf Court. Very different. They're not the everyday, so I want you to realize, some of those, I take, Gary and I take, no disrespect to your comments, and we want to make sure that this reflects what you want. What I will tell you, I don't exactly know, when you're saying it's not transparent, what that means. So that's the part I need help from you all, because it is a very transparent process. Code enforcement has certain protections. You need to know that when a person is under investigation, you know, it's a, it's sort of like a police officer discretion. So there's a range there that when we're approaching this, that we have to look at. So your guidance would be helpful for Gary and I and Sandra to craft this, to do a better balance. So if you've got thoughts specifically, and again, this section really is, this is the enforcement mechanism, because we use it to enforce all the other things that are in your municipal code.
So are you asking for that additional guidance right now, or do you want it to be submitted to you?
I'm asking you to submit, but I do think, I do acknowledge that, I respect the fact that the five of you do not appear on the same page. So last I checked, Gary and I were not mind readers, or we would have bought auto tickets. So we...
I have a couple of questions that seem to be answerable. So why would you change the number of days available to appeal and the number of days minimum payment? Why did you change those?
From 15 to 10?
Yes.
So there is no minimum day, number of days that's required for the town council to set for an appeal. Part of what I did was pick a number of days where it would resolve quickly and efficiently. Difference between 10 and 15 is not a lot. I wouldn't recommend going below 10 or much above 15. Part of the issue, or one of the potential problems with enforcing this administratively and having a hearing officer is, by the time notices of violation are issued, administrative citations, and the process comes through, and an appeal is filed, and a hearing officer is set, and a date's agreed on, and a report's issued, it might be eight months out. And so part of what I'm trying to do is compact a part of this process and make it more streamlined for staff. And 10 days struck me as reasonable. If it doesn't, to the council, that certainly can be changed. I mean, by the time it's issued, the notice of violation, just to be clear, must include, and we always do in bold, all caps, "You have 10 days from receiving this to file an appeal with the town clerk at town hall."
But it was 15.
Yes, it was 15 before, yes.
So can I recommend that council, it's our obligation to get any corrections, changes, suggestions, or questions submitted to our town attorney and town manager? By when would you like to see this? 10 days? 15? I couldn't, I couldn't pass that up.
I think either one is reasonable, Mayor.
What's that?
I think either one is reasonable.
But 10 makes more sense, because it keeps it compact and moving forward.
Exactly. It's exactly right. Yes.
I want to be clear.
So we'll have this first reading back in eight months, is what I'm hearing.
Exactly.
So let's try before, do you think by our next council meeting, you'd want to have this redrafted, or longer than that?
If you take 10 days to get us back, I can't give you this back and meet the 72-hour Brown Act requirement, so you're looking...
Okay, so let's set, let's set the council's feedback within 10 days, starting tomorrow, and then we'll just go on the following in April.
You're looking at April 3rd or April 17th?
That's fine. I mean, it's not that time sensitive. We're looking at...
No, and like I say, I'll just, our philosophy will continue, and we'll operate under the current rules in place.
Right. So it's on us to get back to you within 10 days, or you're going to assume that language is going to proceed with that feedback. And you'll present, you'll judge the feedback as it's presented, what makes sense, you add it, what makes, what doesn't make sense, you, it's your discretion to add or not, and then we'll have this conversation all over again in a few weeks. Councilmember Doran?
Thank you. May I, just to save myself trying to suss out whether this is currently in there, in our current, is there an analog to the proposed 8.05060 that talks about the public, sorry, discretionary filing for public record of a notice of violation?
Yes.
So that is already in our current?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for now?
Just so I'm clear, so if two people say they want a preamble, and three people forgot to mention it, are you going to put a preamble in? That's what, I'm kind of confused how this feedback system is supposed to work. I mean, what do I need to write down or not put in, to make sure that you know what I want?
Yeah, so I think that I will take the feedback from as many council members who submit it, and if there seems to be three folks that want it changed, I will put that change in.
Okay.
And then I will also have alternative language ready to go for the meeting for some of the other comments that are brought up by one or two, and then if a consensus is formed at that meeting, I'll have the language already drafted and ready to go in. Does that sound like an approach?
So it sounds like even at that time, we're not going to be able to do the first reading?
Well, no, I think we could. I'd have it drafted.
Well, we could if people don't change it again. But if they do change it again, then we know we can.
All right. Let's see how this works out.
That's right. Okay. So you don't need any action now to continue this? We just don't continue talking about it?
Correct.
All right. So that not entirely satisfying final administrative regular item, but so be it. Move on to items, and agenda item 12, meeting reports. Let's see, Napa County Flood Control, nothing of substance to report. Councilor Doran, you have our report from NVTA?
I do. The mayor and I attended the NVTA board meeting, where Scott Owens was appointed to the Citizen Advisory Committee. They're for, they're meeting tomorrow, March 7th, City of Napa Committee Room. Their agenda includes a work plan and draft of a countywide bike plan. We also discussed local projects eligible for various grant money, did some calls for projects. We are proceeding with the design of the new maintenance and office facility. We have a ridership survey for the Vine Transit that had some very interesting figures in it, available on the website. We are on budget for our five-year forecast, and as the town manager mentioned, we're in the, working toward the acquisition of five electric zero emission vehicles, at least one of which will come to us in Yountville. We also did talk about some funds that we might get as a result of Senate Bill 1, assuming it stays in place. That'll be about $325 a year, well, $325,000 a year, and we talked about how to prioritize those funds for regional and local projects.
Thank you. Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, do we have a report?
I was, I gave the report last time, but I was reappointed as chair of that authority.
Okay. I'll just report quickly on two League of California Cities meetings. We just had the North Bay Division meeting in American Canyon last week. The topic was disaster response and preparedness. We had panelists from Napa County and Sonoma County speak to some of the operational and other challenges that occurred in October. Also, I attended the League's Executive Board of Directors meeting in Redondo Beach, where I, along with Vacaville Councilmember Curtis Hunt, were two of the members appointed to the Executive Officer Nominating Committee. There was also quite a bit of discussion about upcoming ballot measures and possible ballot measures. We've already written a letter of support to support the League's efforts on Prop 69, which is an effort to protect those Senate Bill 1 transportation dollars, that there is an initiative process happening to repeal that. We also voted to support, or actually voted to oppose, the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act, which would severely restrict our ability to change or impose any fees, charges, or taxes without a, basically a four-fifth vote of this body or the legislature, which is, the way it was described is it would be even more restrictive than Prop 13 and more negatively impactful on cities than the loss of redevelopment funding. So that got everyone's attention. So those were the two league, recent league meetings. Are there any other meetings to report on? Councilman Mueller?
Yes, I attended the CalAFCO board meeting on February 23rd, and there are, our town manager is actually on the CalAFCO Legislation Committee, and there are many bills kind of going through that seem to be related to the California Resource Board and walking, and how it may affect small state municipal drinking water, or small states' water systems, and that they can actually move to dissolve, or expand, or extend their operations. So I might work with the town attorney and actually put some of those on for an agenda item in the future, because I think there's some implications now that the rector situation has come up that may now apply to us. So if you agree to that, I would like to put that on a future agenda.
Okay. Also wanted to recognize the fact that we have Yountville Live coming up, starting March 15th through the 18th. Some wonderful live music, food, and wine to be had all for those days. Also, this Saturday night, the Yountville Red and White Gala, supporting our Yountville Elementary School, is happening at the community center, starting, I believe, at 6:00 PM, and a few tickets, I think, are still available, if you have not already purchased yours. Any other business for this evening? Councilmember Doran?
Thank you. I also would like to suggest a future agenda item. The town manager and I have been talking about trying to address the council about possibly doing a council slash community emergency workshop. I thought it was disaster, both preparedness and recovery and reaction, and I think it's particularly appropriate, having just been to the North Bay meeting, that was really good food for thought. So I'm only, I'm not asking tonight anything about what it should be or what it should look like, but I'm asking for, if there's interest in an agenda item, to at some point in the future, put on the agenda an item about what it might be and what it might look like.
And I think we need to monitor what the county is already doing. I know the Community Emergency Response Team training, CERT training, has been something that's been made available for many years now, and also I know that at the county level, they are already looking at what processes need to be either refined or put in place, and recommendations for all the jurisdictions on how prepared we should be in utilizing staff for emergency operations, things like that. So we talked about that a little bit earlier as well.
And I'm actually speaking also, though, from a community standpoint of, I mean, I still have residents come up to me, when are we going to have a debriefing? How do we know where to go? How do we know where to get information? And I appreciate that we don't want to, I mean, in some ways, we do want to get out in front of the county, I think, for our own community and our own residents, but it's smart to also dovetail with the county. So I would just like to, at some point, know if there's consensus that it could go on a future agenda to talk about how to make all that work together.
Right. For example, the county, the county is working on an alert system beyond NICSOL, that some kind of, whether it's siren, whether it's recorded voice, whatever it might be, that both residents and visitors to the valley might be able to understand what emergency is being, what their notifications are all about. So those are conversations that are ongoing.
I think what I'm hearing also more is an opportunity at a more informal setting to share what some of those opportunities might be for a person to be more involved, aware of CERT, some of the programs. What does the town do? We can also explain that, you know, all evacuation orders are not the same. You know, it's, there's, I sense that there's some stuff that we can do out of that, and then share with, I think you bring up an excellent point, Mayor, that there are some ongoing regional conversations. You know, there may be some code changes. There certainly probably will be some changes in the cell phone, cellphone alert system. So, you know, letting people know, we are currently evaluating, along with the county, an advanced siren warning or localized. So I think, you know, CERT program, you know, what some of those things, I don't know that I need to, you know, maybe what would be better is if there's two of you that would like to work with staff on organizing what that workshop would be. I don't know that I need an agendaized item. If that's something you'd like us to work on, I do need a little break in the pace from, from some of the things that we're doing. But I mean, if, if that's your interest, I certainly know our staff is very receptive. We can certainly put together and talk about, you know, in an event, this is what you might look for, how to come use the community center, put out some guidelines. I mean, I think that's reasonable. I think there's some things we've learned from the incident. We need to share some personal responsibility, because that's probably the missing element. And I've had a lot of conversations where I've, we've been invited, we've done a couple, but I think if there's something there, we can put that together.
I think the first easiest step is to inform people of what's already existing. There are county programs in place today that I think the public just isn't aware of. So if our staff can either put links on our website, put out NICSOL, nextdoor.com announcements of what options are available for them to research, that'd be an immediate first step. If we gather input from, whether it's our own staff or CalFire staff, county staff, and bringing everyone into a room that is in... and bringing everyone into a room that is interested, then we could certainly look at that as well. That's what I'm hearing.
I'd be happy to help work on that and organize it.
And I'd be happy to serve on the ad hoc committee, too. And I do agree, right now, we're full, so it would have to wait some, but just to know it's in queue would be, I think, helpful to some community. But yes, I think, Mayor, what you say is good. I think, as a first order of business, we can talk about a more regional... What the regional resources are, and then get to our own house.
Very good.
One last piece, since it didn't come up, is we... Our commission is hosting a new exhibit, and the artist reception is Saturday morning at the Yountville Community Center.
Do you have a time on that, Steve?
Yeah, tenish. If you come around 10...
Is it 10 o'clock?
They're going to have mimosas.
Yes, Steve does. It's 10:30 to noon.
There we go.
Scones and mimosas. Come on down.
There you go. You know how to attract people. Okay, I think that's our business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting of Tuesday, March 20th, at 6:00 p.m.?
Aye.
There is a motion by, I believe, Mueller, seconded by Dorn Becker. We're all in favor, so good night, everyone.